We're glad that you're here and able to hear and see exactly what's going on with our budget. So you'll see amendments. Some of this information might be repetitive to those who've been in our finance meetings, but we're excited to have you here. So we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. The time is 5:09. Today is the fourteenth of June. Madam Administrator, can you please do a roll call?
Angelique Peterson Mayberry.
I'm present.
Dr. Deborah Hunter-Harville.
Present.
Sonia Mays. Misha Stallworth. Sheri Gay-Dagnogo. Georgia Lemmons.
Present.
Bishop Coletta-Von. Madam Chair, you may begin.
Okay. And now can we have item 1.03, call for a special meeting?
I, Vania Moore, Secretary to the Detroit Public Schools Community District Board of Education, do hereby certify that the foregoing notice of the special meeting of the Board of Education was delivered to each Board of Education member on Monday, May 9, 2022, according to its applicable statute.
Thank you. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now move into item number three on the agenda, which is budget presentation by our CFO.
Good evening, Board members and community. This evening, we'll be presenting our 2022-2023 budget for DPS and DPS-CD. We'll begin with the DPS budget. As we have discussed, Detroit Public Schools continues to exist to collect debt millages on the capital and operating debt. Those millages are going to repay the legacy operating debt and legacy capital debt. We do project an increase in operating millage collections, approximately 1%, increasing to a total of about $74 million in collections for next year. We do also anticipate approximately $71 million in debt payments. This includes approximately $18 million in accelerated DPS debt payment to ORS that we will make next year to accelerate the repayment and DPS exiting out of state debt. That covers DPS. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Vidi to cover the DPS-CD general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Vedino.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I would give everyone a summary of this year's budget. As the board knows, we reviewed the budget both in the academic committee and the finance committee. These slides are repetitive, but I think it is helpful for everyone to see the information if they did not see the presentation through the academic and finance committee. Overall, as we look at planned revenue coming into this year, it's a healthy overall forecast. Both the governor and the House and the Senate are forecasting increases. The House and the Senate and the governor leadership teams are working together to try to finalize next year's budget. We do this every year, which is approximate where they will land, and then we make budget amendments after the budget is adopted and after enrollment comes in for the fall. Overall, the governor is proposing a $435 dollar increase in per pupil funding. The Senate proposed 450, the House 300. So we are going to balance the budget on an expected 400 student allocation, which is approximately an $18 or a $19 million increase in per pupil funding through the general fund. MIPSers, the retirement reimbursements will be maintained. Some proposals are allowing the pension debt to be reduced. And then there are many differences between the governor's budget, the House, and the Senate's budget around what we call categoricals, which are separate funds allocated for different type of initiatives like GSRP, which is early education, ESE reimbursement at risk or 31A, CTE funding, which is career technical education or English language learning funding. So overall, we're balancing the budget with an expectation or expectation of about $6 million in new grant funding outside of the per pupil increase. The governor's proposal does have things like capital funding for facility investments that we don't know if that's going to be approved by the House and the Senate. We could maybe get up to $20 to $25 million to help us continue to upgrade our facilities, but that's not secured or insured at this point. As a reminder, the board has to adopt a budget by June 30. We're doing it today. And as always, after the actual budget is created by the state, then we go back and do amendments after enrollment comes in in the fall. The one thing that certainly is most important to our district is enrollment, and enrollment drives funding. DPS-CD had seen its largest increase in enrollment prior to the pandemic in the year of 1920. The spring count of 20, we were at our highest level at over 51,000 students. As a reminder, there's a difference between students and FTE, which is full-time equivalent, just because it, full-time equivalent is based on actual attendance during the count period. So your enrollment is usually higher than your FTE, but FTE determines funding. But since the height of the pandemic in spring 2020 to now, we have lost about 3,300 FTE. That's consistent with large urban school districts throughout the country that have seen anywhere from a 5% to a 10% decrease in enrollment. Now, over the last two school years, we have not felt the impact of loss of enrollment because of COVID relief funding. COVID relief funding has been used to bridge the gap between our expenditures and our revenue at the state level. So this is why we have not seen a reduction in programming, a reduction in staffing, because we've used COVID relief funding to plug that hole. At the end of next year, we will no longer have COVID relief funding. So next year, we will have to balance the budget without COVID relief funding. And so our greatest priority outside student achievement right now is enrollment. And there's a slide that I have here that best represents where we are as a district as it relates to the city of Detroit and overall enrollment. Seems to be a delay. Go to slide eight. One more. Thank you. So what this slide does is represent what we would call market share with all students that who live in the city, school id children in the city. So for the most part, our share of the market in Detroit has roughly stayed the same, even with the pandemic. There's a slight decline, but not compared to, for example, city charter schools. We've gone from about 44% of students in the city in DPS-CD to 43%, but charter schools have gone from almost 30% to 28%. So they've lost a greater proportion of students than we have. Where we see the largest increase is non-district or non-city charter schools. And I think the greatest reason for that is there's an increase in students attending from the city charter schools outside of the school district or outside of the city because they were open for in-person learning in 1920, or I should say in 2021, when most of our schools were open for learning centers, but not for in-person learning. So a lot of families picked other options because we were not fully open, right or wrong, in 2021. And then overall, enrollment outside the city for city students basically stayed the same from 11.3 to 11.6. So we're going to do the same thing we have been doing, which is relying on the home visit process as we go into this, to this summer, into the fall. Obviously, we'll be marketing through radio, through TV, through billboards, but we really have to get out to homes. And we did that last year through district staff and school-level staff and volunteers, but our employees will be paid to visit homes throughout the summer in order to try to rebound with enrollment, because that will be a risk that we have after COVID relief funding expires at the end of next year. Next slide. So just as a summary of our overall budget, as I said, for the most part, things will remain the same as far as what we're funding this year compared to next year. Our per pupil funding is estimated to increase by $400 or will, an increase of $400 per student. But again, all of this is precarious based on where enrollment stands after COVID relief funding goes away. We did reduce central office staff going into this year. We also reduced central office expenditures, anticipating that we may move into a reduction of staff and over expenditures at the end of next school year. So we're already starting to do that at the central office level. We'll continue to use COVID funding to expand summer school this summer as we did last year. We'll have after-school programming at all schools next year. We'll continue to fund mental health services at all schools. We'll have a nurse at all schools. Every school will have about $500 per student to spend on more field trips, more fun activities during the day. We'll continue to fund a parent liaison at every school. We'll continue to fund internet access, more laptops for students at schools. I already mentioned the mental health support and the nurse at every school. And then lastly, we will earmark a total of $700 million for facility investment over the next five years, which was linked to the COVID relief funding. We're also continuing to fund additional literacy support throughout the district, especially for students that are two or more grade levels below grade level at the elementary and at the high school level, especially with the focus on 10th and 11th grade. At the school level, next slide. At the school level, the staff allocation will remain the same. The only difference that will be felt at schools is that because of COVID relief funding, we were able to fund more school, more teacher positions than enrollment allowed. As we go into this year, the staffing model will be closer to actual enrollment. So we will always fund extra positions in schools that dropped in enrollment in anticipation that some of those schools will rebound in enrollment. But for the most part, the allocation plan will be closer to the actual enrollment. And as a reminder, you can see on the slide, we fund positions based on enrollment. So the higher enrollment or the increase in enrollment, the more positions come with enrollment. So the last two years, we have kept schools what we call harmless based on the loss of enrollment. So for example, if you lost 20 or 60 students, you would typically probably lose two teacher positions. We have not done that for the past two years. Going into this year, we're trying to get closer to actual enrollment and staffing so that we can better be aligned to where we will be the following year if we do not have, if we don't have COVID relief funding. Every school will continue to have a long-term nurse, and as I said, we'll continue to have our mental health support and after-school programming at every school. I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Vedino. I would just quickly say that as we go into, not this year, but the following year, we have quite a few challenges facing us. I think outside of enrollment, which I spent time talking about, our greatest challenge is inflation. So everyone knows how the increases of all prices, including gasoline, is going up, but you have to apply that to the school system. So contracts for cleaning, contracts for labor contracts are going up. Hourly wages rightfully went up, but they're going to have to continue to go up if we're going to be able to staff. Gas prices for our contracted buses. Everything that we do as a, our energy costs, our insurance costs, everything is going up. So with a budget where even with per pupil funding increasing, it's not keeping up with the high increases in inflation. So if our, if our enrollment does not dramatically improve, then we will have to reduce staff and reduce expenditures, not going into this year, but the following year. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of where we stand financially, because in many ways, we have not been operating in reality for the last three fiscal years, if you count this one coming up, because of the loss of enrollment and COVID relief funding that has filled the gap. That all ends at the end of next year. So our attention has to be on enrollment. And I would, as a final note, and I'll talk more about this at the regular board meeting, is attendance, attendance, attendance. 70% of our students are chronically absent as of today. And so we can't educate children the way we know we can if they don't consistently attend school. Quarantining rules at the beginning of the year disrupted attendance. Going online in January disrupted attendance. And the year before would not have inconsistency of in-person learning, also disrupted attendance, which disrupts student achievement, which disrupts enrollment. So more than anything next year, we have to have consistency with in-person learning despite all the challenges that we're facing, because we know it leads to better attendance, which leads to better achievement, which also leads to better enrollment. Mr. Vedino, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Vidi. As Dr. Vidi mentioned, as Dr. Vidi mentioned in the beginning, our revenue is remaining consistent next year. There are slight changes. We are seeing a reduction in the enhancement millage that is due to Governor Snyder's approval to require sharing of that millage with charter schools. And so we do see a decline in revenue there that is offset by the increases that we're receiving in state funding. On the expenditure side, we are remaining consistent with this past year. We will have a total of a little over a billion dollars in expenditures, slightly higher than the final budget amendment, but again, in line with the projection and the support that Dr. Vidi has outlined and that we will continue for next year. As we have indicated, this does include several hundred million dollars in one-time COVID funding. Those expenditures will have to be removed in order to balance the budget going into FY '24. And lastly, as Dr. Vidi has already highlighted here, we do have a number of cost constraints as we look forward into FY '24 that we're going to have to continue to balance in order to ensure that the district remains balanced and has a surplus. And then you can see the actual projections and revenue and expenditures here. The only major note that I will change, I will just highlight here, the reduction in local sources. We had the $11 million in one-time insurance revenue due to the flood. Additionally, the other remaining, about $5 million, is a reduction in the enhancement millage. So that's why local revenue is going down. On the central support services, the decrease there is related to the reduction in COVID testing costs that we're planning for next year, reducing from testing every day to just having the two testing centers. That concludes the DPS-CD general budget. As we look at the food service budget, we are projecting to continue to have a balanced budget on the food service budget. This projects returning again to full-person enrollment and students eating at the pre-pandemic levels. It also includes continuing to maintain staff salaries at their increased levels, and it does, even with that, generate a surplus and allows the food service account to make the $1.5 million indirect payment back to the district. This is for the management services that the district provides to that department. Lastly, is the student activity account. This is the school checking accounts where they raise funds for student activities, field trips, and other fundraisers. This projects again another balanced budget. That concludes the budgets for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Vedino. Do we have any questions from the board as it relates to the budget? I know at the finance meeting, there were a lot of questions and a lot of conversation. And we know that those stand-in committee meetings, they are working meetings, so you will hear a lot more than what you hear at the board meeting simply because the three board members that are present have had an opportunity to go into the presentation, ask questions. The four board members that are not present have an opportunity to do that prior to the board meeting or even at the board meeting. So a lot of times, people have said, there aren't a lot of questions asked. They have been asked prior to the regular board meeting. Those committee meetings are the working meetings for sure. Any more questions? Any questions or comments from board? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vedino. We'll now move into public comment. Before we go into public comment, let me just remind everyone, if you have a comment that's related to the budget hearing agenda, then we will hear from that during this meeting. If not, I encourage you to hold your comment to the next meeting if the comment is more general, more broad, and not around anything that was shared for this top portion of the budget hearing meeting. For in-person public comment, members of the public are welcome to address the board during public comment. Individuals wishing to address the board must register and receive an identification number. The chair will call the name or number for individuals to address the board during public comment. Please remain seated until your name or number is called. For virtual public comment, members of the public are also welcome to address the board through virtual public comment. Virtual public comment will be facilitated through a Zoom webinar where individuals who wish to address the board may do so by choosing one of the two options. Through your computer, you can select the raise-your-hand option on the screen, or through your phone, you can press star nine, and that raises your hand through the telephone. To register, log onto the meeting and complete one of these options prior to the chair announcing the close of public comment registration. The meeting administrator will select the individuals in order received. You will remain muted until it is your time to speak. All commentators, whether virtual or in-person, will be limited to three minutes. The superintendent will reply to questions or concerns raised today that do not violate ethical or legal standards, confidentiality, privacy of others, or requires additional information to respond. If you would like a direct response to your question and/or concern, please forward an email to the Secretary of the Board, vania more@vania dot more@detroitk12 dot org. Do we have those who are interested in public comment for the budget hearing? Let's see, Ms. Drake. Nobody for a budget hearing, okay. Who? Dr. Telford? Oh, I'm sorry. Mama Moore? Yeah, but I'd rather hear you from the mic, so everybody can hear you. Hold on, Mother Moore, it doesn't seem like it's on. Can somebody? No. Give us one second.
Okay.
You can hear me now.
Yes. With the takeover Detroit Public Schools by the state and then giving it back to us with a huge deficit, I did not see anything in the presentation that tells us how much money are we in deficit from DPS? And when will it be paid off?
Okay. Mr. Vedino, is that the 18 and 13 mil question?
Yes, the 18 mils is, was originally scheduled to be repaid in 2027. Currently, based on tax collections, it will be repaid in 2026 and potentially could be earlier, depending again on property tax increases as well as collection rates. But we can tentatively say 2026. We have made over $40 million in supplemental ORS debt payment, which the ORS debt has an 8% interest. So every time we're making accelerated debt payments, we're reducing again the total interest payments. The total outstanding, Mother Moore, is a little over $250 million on the operating debt. Between 250 and 300, I would have to go and confirm that actual number. On the capital debt, the 13 mils, there is approximately $1.5 billion that won't be repaid, again, depending on interest rates, between 2042 and 2050. I will note that interest rates had been historically low, lower than 2%. They are now increasing. Those increased interest rates will extend the timeline because every year, we're borrowing about $100 million from the state, and they're charging us interest. Currently, the new market rates are about 3%. So again, the higher the interest rates go, the longer it will take to repay that debt. Oh, it depends on the property value. So it's 13 mils for all property. So it would depend again on the property value, those 13 mils are assessed. For the 18 mils, that's non-homestead, so it's business property. And then rental properties that individuals would own are assessed 18 mils. And again, it goes, it depends on the assessed property value. I wouldn't want to do that, because it would depend if the house is valued at $100,000 or $1 million. If it's $100,000, it's going to be one-tenth of the taxes paid. If it was $1 million, I can follow up and give you an estimate. I wouldn't want to do that on the spot.
Correct.
Yes.
And if you're a Detroit resident, when you look at your tax bill and you see DPS, School District, on there, please know that what you're paying is not for DPS-CD. It is going towards the debt that was just described in the question and the answer. And a lot of times, people are unsure about that. No more in-person. We do have three online. Let me make sure I'm not missing anybody in person. Ms. Drake, I'm going to turn it over to you for the three public commenters online before we move into our regular board meeting.
Mr. Begum? Begum, if I pronounced that wrong, I apologize. Please go ahead with your comment.
Begum.
It's Wajia Begum.
Begum, if I pronounced that wrong, I apologize. Please go ahead with your comment.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Wajia Begum, and I'm here on behalf of Detroit Area Youth United Michigan, also known as DAAM. DAAM is a youth-led social justice organization home to Detroit students and organizers. As some of you may or may not know, DAAM has been working on a year-long campaign to end the uniform policy. It revised the dress code policy to fit the standards of dress code policy free of discrimination, including ableism, sexism, racism, and fatphobia. I'm here today to honor the work of those students, and to push the school board to eliminate mandates of the uniform policy and accept the revisions on the new proposal for the dress code. We have heard from students all across the district and state of Michigan, and ultimately, we have come to the conclusion that students want this policy gone. Coming to school in comfortable, gender-affirming clothes compared to uniforms does not relate to academic achievement. Some may argue that academic achievement increases by wearing uniforms. However, students can argue that wearing comfortable clothing will help them feel better about learning material. The truth is that what does lower academic achievement is disciplining kids for an outdated policy that can leave discipline records to hurt their chances of further opportunities and achievements. The truth is also that the uniform policy leads to a racial history. Per the American Indian Relief Council, the goal of the boarding schools was to use education as a tool to assimilate Indian tribes into the mainstream, a mainstream of the American way of life, a protestant ideology of the mid-19th century. The reformers assumed that it was necessary to civilize this Native Indian and make them accept European, white male-dominated beliefs and value systems. In other words, the goal was to destroy Native American culture in favor of the new American way. School uniforms were first implemented in the late 1990s and were used for the schooling of minorities, specifically Native American women. In 1996, the U.S. Department of Education reported that only 3% of public schools mandated uniforms. In our school district, uniforms were not implemented until 2014. It is not historical nor traditional, it is in fact recent. Uniforms also emphasize racial divisions. Schools with a minority student population of 50% or more are four times as likely to require uniforms than schools with a minority population of 20 to 49% and 24 times more likely than schools with minority population of 5% to 19%. Often times, as students, we ask, how will the uniform policy help us? The response is to prepare us for the real world. We say if school is to prepare us for college where there is no uniform policy or heavy restrictions on clothing, then why must we abide by such rules? The response is to prepare you for the workforce. Then my question is, are we in school to learn and reach our fullest potential or to be treated as workers in our capitalistic society? Students are not workers. Educators are not employers.
Thank you. Ms. Drake? So going forward, I let the student continue. I know the vice president and I both met with members from DAAM last week. I know the vice president and I both met with members from DAAM last week regarding uniforms. So that wasn't on the budget agenda. So please encourage them to sign up for public comment for the second meeting, just so that we can be respectful of everyone else who held their comment till the next meeting.
Julia, please go ahead with your comment.
Hi, I'm here with Wajia and with DAAM, and I'm intending to speak during public comment at the next section.
Thanks, Julia.
So I'll yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Tracy, please go ahead with your public comment. Tracy, please go ahead with your public comment.
Well, hi. Are you aware that we're trying to hear the live comment as well as the online comment at the same time? I will hold my comment until later.
Thank you.
Was that it, Ms. Drake, the three online?
We have one more.
Okay.
Kat, please go ahead with your comment.
Yes, hello. My name is Celeste, and my comment is regarding school safety, if you will, in terms of the process and the procedure at the high school level specifically for when things are occurring or happening. There have been some incidents that I'm personally aware of, where students have gone to security. They've gone through the process to report it to DPS CD police that they were being harassed, or bullied, or stalked by students in the school. And it came to my attention that the procedure, in order for DPS CD police or security to follow up, is that that student or that student's family has to file a report with the Detroit Police Department.
Ms. Celeste.
And if you are a family that lives in that community
Can you tell Ms. Celeste where we're going to pick her back up for the second meeting?
Ms. Celeste, I'm so sorry to interrupt. However, can you please hold that public comment till the next meeting, which will begin shortly?
And we'll be talking about safety.
No, ma'am, but we're still at the budget meeting that began at 5:00.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Celeste.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Was that the last online public comment? Okay. So the chair entertained a motion to adjourn. We have a quorum. Welcome. Member Gaye Dagnogo, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Is there support for adjournment for the budget hearing?
Support.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adjourned the budget hearing meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We'll now move into our regular board meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order. The time is 5:42. Please note that public comment for the regular board meeting is now open. Madam Administrator, can you please do a roll call for the regular board meeting? Angelique Peterson Mayberry.
I'm present.
Dr. Deborah Hunter Harville.
Present.
Sonia Mays. Misha Stallworth. Sheri Gaye Dagnogo.
Present.
Georgia Lemmons.
Present.
Bishop Coletta Vaughn. Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you so much. We'll now move into our meeting norms. "We respect the right of all persons to participate in this public meeting of the board and kindly request that everyone engage in behavior that supports the same. In the event that anyone engages in behavior that is not in support of the good, we request that you refrain from that behavior." As we go into our moment of silence today, we have a couple of people that we need to acknowledge. Ms. Skylar Amesquita, who was a kindergartner at Bethune. Ms. Zanaya Bland, who was a student at Paul Robeson Malcolm X. And lifting up, Ms. Verlina Howard, who is from the Office of School and Nutrition. She's an area manager. Just lifting her up in prayer as she is experiencing some extremely difficult health challenges in the hospital right now due to a car accident yesterday. So if we could, during our moment of silence, please lift up the families of young Ms. Bland, the family of young Ms. Amesquita, and Verlina Howard. Thank you. It's always tough when we do moments of silence, but to have two young people on that list just speaks to the times that we're in right now. We will now, if you please, stand for our Star Spangled Banner and lift every voice and sing. Thank you. You may be seated. Can we give a round of applause? We don't need to go far. Those are our students from DSA. Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion as we move to item number three, approval of the agenda as presented. Madam Chair? Yeah, so it's been moved by Member Gaye Dagnogo and supported by Member Lemmons. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number four. We have our regular board meeting minutes from May 10, 2022, our academic committee meeting minutes from May 26, 2022, and our finance committee meeting minutes from June 3, 2022. Is there a desire to tie bar items 4.01 through 4.03? Is there any support? It's been properly moved by Member Gaye Dagnogo and properly supported by Vice President Hunter Harville to tie bar items 4.01 through 4.03. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of tie barring 4.1 through 4.03 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The chair will now entertain a motion for the tie bar of items 4.1 through 4.03.
I'm sorry, 4.01 to 4.03?
03. Is there support?
Support.
It's been properly moved by Vice President Hunter Harville, properly supported by Member Gaye Dagnogo for the tie bar of items 4.1 through 4.03. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We'll now move into item number five, chair remarks. So we're in graduation season. Seems as if we just started, but graduations began today, and there were over 10 today. So our board members attended, and we will continue to attend as our schedules permit. To all of our 2022 graduates, congratulations as you matriculate from being an amazing DPS CD student to being an amazing DPS CD alumni. For all of the parents, congratulations. Your young people have done an amazing job in getting to this point. Our first DPS CD Come Home event took place, and we are super excited that thousands of alum and friends of alum participated in a three-day weekend where we were able to grow our base of advocates, supporters, and stakeholders. Hundreds joined us as we kicked off a evening of the fine arts, where our students were able to showcase their musical, vocal, and acting talent. Friday, the alum were able to visit schools, and we ended with an outdoor meet and greet at the DAC. Saturday, we celebrated our district and the neighborhood with a Taste of Lirinoi, where we had bands and food trucks, music, dancing, shopping, and celebrating us, DPS CD, in the neighborhood. Then Sunday, nearly 1,000 alum came out for a black tie, red carpet event at the Huntington, where we celebrated each other and awarded alum in a variety of categories. Overall, alumni who attended the event are still talking about the opportunities identified that allows them to continue to support the district and our students and help make us all who we are today. Thank you to all of our sponsors who help just a thought become a reality. Please note that summer school conversations are beyond underway. Summer school will begin next month. Many families have expressed this interest for closing this learning gap that may have been created during COVID or just an opportunity to spend time in recreational or enhancement programs and workshops to keep the mind busy. So if you have not already signed up for summer school, please do so. We want to make sure we have adequate staff for summer school, and when we have an influx of people the day of, then it will appear that we are not fully staffed. So if you know that you want your young people to be in one of our 24 schools for summer, those are 24 schools with air conditioning, so they were strategically selected, please, 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 make sure you sign up. Lastly, I've asked Dr. Vidi tonight to talk about security and safety in our district. We know that Ms. Celeste has started. And all of this, of course, this is something that's near and dear to us all as we try to continue to educate our young people, support our staff in such a strained and unpredictable climate. We know that there are some legitimate situations where there is genuine help needed for those who may be dealing with emotional or mental challenges. But unfortunately, sometimes threats are linked to humorous joke-like behavior, empty threats. And for this reason, we cannot assume that any threat is empty. So we'll continue to investigate swiftly, and at the end of that investigation, swiftly act. I cannot overstate that we need all hands on deck with our young people. Please, with your young people, look for things like change behavior, check in book bags, monitor in social media. And if you see something, please say something. A lot of the cases that we've identified have been where classmates have actually said something. So Dr. Vidi will go deeper into his presentation tonight as we talk about security, because I know for a lot of you, you've reached out to us, and we've had one-on-one conversations with different board members and you. But this is absolutely the platform to have that conversation holistically. That will conclude the chair remarks. At this time, we'll move to the next agenda item. Standing Board Committee Reports. And we'll start with our vice president. For those who may not attend all of our meetings in the past, every three months, we do a standing committee report because so many of our board members sit in other spaces representing our board. So what we thought would be beneficial for the community is to at least hear just a snippet of that. Those meetings are open to the public. So if you go on the website, you can find out information for each individual space. But we thought this would be a great opportunity to at least share a little bit about what's going on in those other spaces as we represent the board in those spaces. Vice President?
Thank you and good evening. I would like to share from the Michigan Association of School Boards that the Michigan Department of Education has approved a $600,000 grant for reimbursement for school board member training. And as we have a couple of policies that deal with professional development for school board members, et cetera, just let the record show that the Michigan Department of Ed will be reimbursing us and the paperwork, et cetera, is probably sent to the superintendent's office. But right now, there are about 25 classes that are eligible for $100 per class reimbursement. So that would be for all of us, so wanted to let you know that. There is a MDE Special Education Advisory Committee appointment for a member that we might recommend, so we'll have that on for July. And then also, the Board of Directors' meeting dates for the new year have been set, and you'll see that in your report. And then for Exceptional Student Education, on June 4, right here at Martin Luther King Junior Senior High School, we hosted our first Career and Transition Expo, welcoming over 10 community partners and engaging a former Detroit Public School student, alum Kiara May. And she talked about her experiences as an ESE, or back then, a special ed student in the district, and how she's been able to grow and move forward, and she's now working in Flint, Michigan. I did give her name to Dr. Vidi as someone we might want to hear about. We want to thank the ESE staff for putting on the Exceptional Student Transition Team, to see our ESE students present and to know that there was someone here from Social Security Office, someone here from community colleges to help them transition out of high school and move into those other kinds of career thoughts was really great. So we appreciated that. The Parent Advisory Council is still requesting parents for students with an active IEP enrolled in DPS CD to work with our Exceptional Student Administrators and staff so we can continue implementing the board-approved ESE plan. So if you are interested or you know that you need to make that happen for your child, please call our Office of Exceptional Student Education. Last year, on June 1st and 2nd, DPS CD student athletes participated in the Special Olympics State Summer Games. participated in the Special Olympics State Summer Games, bringing home thirty-seven gold, Madam President, thirty-three silver board members, and twenty-five bronze medals, Mr. Superintendent. So we're excited to celebrate all of our students and families, coaches, et cetera, for the DPS CD Special Olympics. And congratulations to our student athletes. Maybe you'll get... Thank you. Maybe we'll get a chance to see them in the fall. And Special Olympics has also announced that because of the work emphasizing inclusion through DPS CD with over eighty buildings hosting some form of unified champions programming as well as recent expansion of inclusive ed options for students with exceptional needs. The Office of Exceptional Student Education will be the first school district to ever receive the highest designation in Special Olympics of Michigan. So that award ceremony will take place in the fall, and we'll tell you more about that. And that's all of the updates I have at this time. Just wanted to brief you and let you know what's going on in ESE and of course, with Michigan Association of School Boards.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, congratulations to our students. And I think it's great that we have a transitional team for our young people when they leave high school, where they go and how they can get there. Member Gaye Dagnogo, is there a legislative report?
No report today, thank you.
No report, okay. So just really quickly, the DPS Foundation, they're having their annual golf outing. We know the foundation is the fiduciary for the school district. I know it's been asked before if the funds go to charter schools in the city as well. The answer is no. The funds raised through the foundation are only for DPS CD. So a lot of the times where you have stakeholders who reach out to the foundation, it is because they have expectations of funding going to DPS CD students. One of the annual events that raises money is the golf outing on June twenty-seventh. You can contact Maria Colleance... You can contact her at the DPS Foundation website if you are interested in golfing or making a donation that will get to our DPS CD students. The other organization stakeholder partner is the Detroit Public Library Commission. So the Detroit Public Library, keep your eyes and ears open, select branches, will be reopening on July first. So please know that there were a lot of branches that were closed due to COVID and staffing issues, but there will be select branches that will be reopening on July first. DPN has an online kids zone where parents and students can register at detroitpubliclibrary.org, and you can register for these things. A virtual reading lab available to read to students. You could sign up for the one thousand book reading challenge, where parents are challenged to read a thousand books to their students before kindergarten. Older students are also welcome to participate. Log the books, read, and students will receive, after completion, a badge stating that they have successfully completed. You can also, through this website, ABC Mouse Library Edition. And lastly, tutor.com, which offers twenty-four seven one-to-one learning solutions for students and professionals, so twenty-four hours, seven days a week. The next Library Commission meeting is next Tuesday. You can check the website to get information to attend either online or at the main library. The meeting is at one thirty. So that is all that we have externally, because we have a couple of people who are absent. Actually, Member Vaughn is out of graduation. It's still taking place, Cass Tech. And Member May suffered a loss in her family. So we will move on. Let me state that public comment has now closed. So public comment has now closed, and the time is six oh four. Six oh four, public comment has now closed. We'll move into the next item, which is the finance report by our CFO.
Thank you very much. This evening, we'll be presenting the financials through April. We will start with DPS. We continue to receive tax collections on the thirteen and eighteen mills, although minor collections. We won't receive the next major transfer until the end of June, but we did make all bond payments in the month. For DPS CD, revenue and expenditures are remaining on track. As we can see, revenue is exceeding expenditures. We do project a balanced budget for DPS CD, and that's included in the DPS CD Budget Amendment Two. You will see an increase in cash. This is for twofold. One, we started to receive the federal revenue in. Second, as the board approved the seven hundred million dollar capital projects transfer, we will start to make those transfers from that available cash to fund those facility improvements. So those transfers will start to take place next year. Lastly, we had approximately twenty-eight point two million dollars in COVID expenditures for the month, bringing us to three hundred and five million dollars in expenditures. I do want to note that this will increase pretty significantly as we do the available COVID transfers in the month of June. So we will see a significant increase there as we recognize additional revenue to transfer to the facilities. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Potato. Do we have any questions for the CFO from his finance report? If not, Mr. Potato, thank you.
Thank you.
You can file it for auditing purposes. We'll now move into the next item, which is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll begin with recognitions. Ms. Wilson, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Viti. Tonight, we have several recognitions, but some are not here yet because of graduations. And so we will go with the ones that are here tonight. Dante is on his way, but I understand his mom is in the audience. Mom, are you here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Chauncey is here. Okay. Our core value excellence states, be relentless in pursuit of greatness, be bold and innovate, learn from your mistakes, hold yourself and others to high standards. DPS CD is not only known for our commitment to students and academic excellence, but also for our athletic achievements. Martin Luther King Junior Senior High School is home to state-recognized athlete Chauncey Willis Junior, named also as Mister Basketball. Chauncey Willis Junior is a senior here at MLK who is exemplifying excellence in and out of the classroom. Chauncey's commitment to excellence and leadership resulted in his team winning the PSL Basketball City Championship, his recruitment to play D-one college basketball, and his award of the two thousand and twenty-two B.C.A.M. Mister Basketball title. Congratulations, Chauncey, on being named the two thousand and twenty-two Mister Basketball and excelling in and out of the classroom. We see you rising, and we're also saying congratulations to his mom. And we want to make sure that Dante is here.
Dante's here.
Okay, perfect. Our core value excellence states, be relentless in pursuit of greatness, be bold and innovate, learn from your mistakes, hold yourself and others to high standards. Detroit Public Schools Community District is not only known for our commitment to students and academic excellence, but also for our athletic achievements, as we see tonight. Again, Martin Luther King Junior Senior High School, home to the Crusaders, is also home to state-recognized athlete Mister Football. Dante Moore is a junior at MLK, excelling in and out of the classroom. This season, he led his team to the Division III State Championship. He is the first junior to be named Mister Football and is currently being recruited by major college football programs such as U of M. Yes, he has another year at DPS CD to continue to rise. Congratulations, Dante, on being named the two thousand and twenty-two Mister Football and setting an example of excellence in and out of the classroom. And thank you, Mr. Cannon, for making sure Mister Basketball, Mister Football, were here. Give him another round of applause. He's been trying to do this for several months now, but the guys are busy. We have one more. Not done yet. So Coach Cannon, on behalf of our Renaissance team, they said they couldn't make it, and they wanted you to accept this on their behalf. Again, our core value excellence states, you guys should be all standing with me by now. Be relentless in your pursuit of greatness, learn from your mistakes, hold yourself and others to high standards. The Renaissance Girls Track Team exemplified excellence by winning the Division I State Championship led by record-setting runner Kayla Jackson on Saturday, June fourth. Tonight, we are recognizing the Renaissance co-coaches who couldn't be here because of graduation. You are here. Okay, woo, woo. Everybody was getting here. Coach Cannon, you can be relieved of your duty. We recognize Renaissance co-coaches Darnell Hall and Calvin Johnson and the team at your excellent performance. And we want to give a special shout-out to Kayla Jackson for her continued pursuit of excellence, for her record-setting performance. Give him a round of applause. Renaissance Phoenix, rising. Thank you.
Good evening again. As always, I'll review some COVID numbers, our metrics, and as our board chair mentioned, just an overview of the safety and security strategies that we've implemented now for the past five years, but certainly that have been accelerated and tightened with the most recent increase in mass shootings. COVID numbers are on the decline. You can see here, as we always show, the number of positive cases that we have throughout the district. Overall, our positivity rate is down at point eight four. For this past week, the city rate is also down at about six percent, and the Michigan rate is down also at about fourteen percent with rounding. You see the county averages there as well. As a reminder, the email address that you can see on the bottom left of your slide, if you're in the audience, and maybe if you can see from far away on the online version, is info.reopen@detroitk12.org. Detroitk12.org. That email address, you can submit any anonymous complaints about not being compliant with our COVID protocols or to register any complaints about cleanliness in schools. That email address will be used next year. Even though we will scale back many of our COVID safety precautions, that email will exist to report any uncleanliness in schools. And you can also use our three-one-three number there, three-one-three-five-seven-eight-seventy-eighteen. That will also remain in place to call anonymously to register any concerns or complaints around cleanliness. When we look at our metrics, I spoke at length at the budget hearing about forty-five minutes ago about just where we are with enrollment. In spring two thousand and twenty, we are at our highest level in almost two decades of enrollment at over fifty-three, fifty-one thousand. That number has dropped by about three thousand, three hundred students. We have not felt that budgetarily as far as staffing or programs because of COVID relief funding. That COVID relief funding expires at the end of next year. So we have quite a few challenges in front of us as a district if we're not able to increase that enrollment back to where it was. On the positive side, we're seeing increases in per pupil funding, but the increases in per pupil funding are not keeping at pace with what we're seeing throughout the country, which is inflation. Every cost of everything, as you all know as consumers, is increasing, and you're feeling it as an individual consumer, but we are feeling it as a district. So whether it is the cost for labor, salaries, gas, cleaning, cleaning supplies, just everything that you can think of, the cost is going up. And that affects our budget. So if we don't see dramatic increases in per pupil funding beyond even what we're seeing going into this year without an increase in enrollment, next year, we'll be in a situation where we will likely have to cut back on our expenditures in order to balance the budget. When we look at this year, which thankfully, we only have, what, three, about eight, nine more days of school left. This is by far the longest school year that I have felt we've had. Lots of challenges from the beginning of the year of just reopening schools and managing all the COVID requirements that go along with it, the quarantining that had to happen up to fourteen days even for students that were not sick but were close contacts, including staff, trying to staff schools after a year and a quarter of not being in person, trying to get all the staffing right outside of teachers. Then we had the surge in January. We went online for a month, and then we came back. And we have been open since, but it has not been easy. Add the Oxford shooting, add the anxiety linked to mass shootings, and it has been a rough, tough year. I think we have done the best we can to educate our children, but we have taken a step back. When you look at enrollment, overall attendance, and maybe even student achievement. But we did our best this year, and next year, it's about trying to get as close to the new normal as possible. And I think by doing that, we can start to rebound with enrollment, attendance, and most importantly, student achievement. The positive is that this year, and the year's not over yet, but our average daily attendance has improved versus last year, as of now, although our attendance rates have been extremely low in June, as those that have been working in our schools and the audience know. In addition to that, our chronic absenteeism actually higher this year at forty, at seventy-three percent, and the year's not over. And we've had some of our biggest gaps in attendance in June. So average daily attendance has improved, chronic absenteeism has increased, and that's missing more, eighteen or more days throughout the calendar year. On the positive side, I think academic growth has improved when we look as compared to last year. So in literacy and math, and I'll skip ahead to the next slide, the data's not here because this is mid-year data that you'll see on that slide, but with the end-of-year data coming in with I-ready and K-eight reading and K-eight math, when compared to last year, we saw more, we're going to see more growth as far as one-year growth and two more years of growth. The challenge will be at and above grade-level performance. Our I-ready data is predicting either three percentage points below where we were or three percentage points above where we were as far as proficiency was concerned in nineteen-twenty. Our goal this year was to set a new baseline for at and above grade-level performance and improve after this year. This was a year of just re-establishing rituals, routines, expectations around being in person after a full school year and a quarter. But next year, we hope to rebuild and start to where we left off with our reform before the pandemic hit. Before the pandemic hit, every indicator was moving in the right direction. Before the pandemic hit, every indicator was moving in the right direction, from enrollment to attendance to chronic absenteeism to student achievement, even based on state and national test scores. This year was a baseline year to re-establish at and above-grade level performance, but show growth, and we did show growth. I think we're going to see growth at the end of the year. But next year, we have to get back to moving more students to at and above-grade level performance. Our survey data is not, is all-in, but we have to process it and put it together for this final presentation at the end of the year and include it in the evaluations as we finish out the year as well. Just some last points around staffing. We continue to be in a very positive position regarding teacher recruitment and retention. Although we have roughly 70 teacher vacancies, we're actually over surplus by 200 teachers when we look at enrollment. We have no plans of laying teachers off on this upcoming year or even the following year. Teaching staffing will always be our priority. We overstaff our teachers, knowing that we always have about 100 teachers that retire every year, and then we have about another 100 that maybe resign. So we are well-positioned to be fully staffed at the beginning of the year. We only have about three special education vacancies. Only three schools have, only two schools have three teacher vacancies. Only two schools have, two, 11 schools have two teacher vacancies, and about 30 schools only have one teacher vacancy. All the other schools are fully staffed as far as teachers are concerned. We still have a lot of work to do regarding food and nutrition staffing. That's our greatest challenge, and it makes sense. Even though we've moved to $15, $16 an hour, if you look throughout the city, metro Detroit, great shortages in the hourly field, across the, across the industries and throughout the market. So, just as airlines are cutting flights because of shortages in staffing, we continue to be challenged mainly in the hourly employment front, even though we've gone to $15, $16 an hour and we're offering full benefits. So, although we've made tremendous increases and improvements this year, when we look at staffing, our greatest challenge is hourly and food and nutrition, and that's a focus area of ours going into the summer. All the other areas, we were pretty much stable and improving across the district. We're not hiring as much hourly right now because the year's closing. We're trying to hire, but people are not being employed now or seeking employment because we're heading into the summer, and most of our hourly employees are only 10-month employees. So it doesn't make sense to grab a job at the end of the year when then you don't have employment for the summer months. So, that's something that we'll pick up again in the summer. I think most importantly for tonight was a review, again, of our safety standards. And there's a lot here to talk about, but I think it is important that we assure everyone that we have a plan, and we continue to refine and implement that plan in order to keep our students and our employees safe. So, one, we've done a lot of work of trying to have a single entry into all schools, and that is a hard process to implement because people are used to going through side doors. Often, staff wants to come through the door that they're closest to as far as the parking lot is concerned. I think most schools are down to at least two points of entry, but we want to get to one point of entry because by having one point of entry, we can ensure that the perimeter doors throughout the building are closed and can't be accessed if someone wants to do harm to staff or students. So, I'm using this presentation also to reiterate what we all have to commit to, which is that all the doors throughout the building are closed and locked. Now, you can open the door from the inside of a case of a fire, but you should not be opening doors to people, whether you know them or not, if those doors are closed. So again, single point of entry. 80% of our schools have metal detectors. The only, the only schools that do not have metal detectors are very small elementary and KH for the most part. Those schools will be going through an engagement process by the end of this year and going into next year about whether they want a metal detector or not. We've also reviewed our metal detectors to ensure that they work. We have made quite a few orders this year with another order coming in late June in order to refresh older or outdated metal detectors. We are increasing random searches. So random searches are legal as long as they are random and systematic, meaning if you pick every second student or you go into a classroom and every third student in a row, you just can't be, pretend you're being random and not be random because that leads to legal issues. Obviously, we can always check lockers and desks because those are the properties of the school district. There's been a lot of talk about police officers and whether we should have them or not. I think that is a benefit that we have our own police officers. The benefit of having our own police officers is that their work can be more tied to the work of schools. When you have incidents and you call 911, you typically would get a DPD officer who don't know the students. They don't understand special needs. They don't know the staff. They can overreact. They don't know how to de-escalate often with students in the school environment. So, going into next year, there will be a police officer assigned to each of the 11 neighborhood high schools. That's where the majority of our issues arise. So neighborhood high schools, as remember, are those that are not exam or application schools. So, East News Village, Northwestern, Cody, Henry Ford, Mumford, Western are some examples of our neighborhood high schools. There are 11. Now, a second officer will be assigned to each of those 11 neighborhood feeder patterns. So, with the, with the city having 11 neighborhood high schools, there are 11 feeder patterns. Feeder patterns are where the K-5s and the K-8s outside of the exam and application schools feed into that neighborhood high school. So every neighborhood high school will have an assigned officer. They will spend the majority of the day at that school, and then there'll be a second officer that will be on duty for that feeder pattern. They will spend most of their time at the K-5s and K-8s. They will also be backup for the officer at the neighborhood high school. I think one thing that we don't often think about is we feel very comfortable, the fact that we do have officers. We do have officers in schools. But just like any employee, they are entitled to a day off. So, on any given day, you could have an officer out, and you don't necessarily have an officer at the school. So often, I get an email from someone saying, "Well, an officer wasn't here today." I can assure that an officer will be at every school that they're normally assigned at because people have the right to take off. And there is no way to directly staff that on a consistent daily basis. But we will use backup with a focus on our high schools. We also, by the fall, will have an armed officer, not necessarily a police officer, at Renaissance, King, and Caz, which are three large high schools that are not neighborhood schools. King does have a small neighborhood component, but is moving toward an exam status across their grades. We also have security guards. These are not officers. They do not carry a weapon. They cannot make arrests. The role of the security guard is to break up fights, to monitor students as they walk through the metal detector, move through classrooms, supervise students through lunch, make sure that the bathrooms are not being violated. But their role is not to arrest. The role of the police officer is not to implement the code of conduct. So, police officers don't remove disruptive students from the classroom. Police officers, for the most part, do not break up fights unless it's a large fight that needs additional assistance. So I think it's important to continue to recognize the role of the police officer versus security guard. In addition to that, we've made a lot of investments in just the infrastructure and technology of our schools. All of our K-8s and K-5s have what we call in, not only do our schools have reader cards now, but in order to get into most of our K-8s and K-5s, you have to be buzzed in. So if all the doors are properly closed throughout the building, including the cafeteria, that often that door is open in the back in order to let in air, that's closed. The only way you can get into most of our K-5s and K-8s is if you're buzzed in from the front door. So there's a camera at the front of all K-5s and K-8s. You see someone's face, and you buzz them in. That can dramatically reduce some of the violence that we've seen across the country. That can lead to other problems if intruders that are not screened come in. We have ID systems now in all of our schools. We just have to use them more regularly and across the board. But we have implemented an ID card for all of our employees and all of our contractors. And so they have different color codes, and they should be worn when you're in the building, which allows you to see that you're actually an employee of the district, whether it's central office, school, and even our, our contractors have a card which is a different color so you know that that adult that's in the building is there as a contractor or even a volunteer. We've done a lot of work with continuing to invest in walkie-talkies. School leadership teams can't communicate if there's a crisis without walkies in the building. So, we've gotten to the point where we have 10 walkie-talkies going to all schools so that the AP, the principals, security guards, a police officer, deans, school facilitators have a walkie to talk to in case of an emergency. We've reviewed all of our PA systems. These are the public address systems in our schools. So, most, I would say 80% of our PA systems work across the school. Now, that's important because if you have an emergency and you're going on lockdown, everyone in the building should know that so that you lock down and properly close classrooms. About 20% of our PA systems either need significant repairs or cannot be repaired because they're so outdated. In those situations, we're buying walkies for teachers in classrooms where the PA systems don't work so that you can communicate through the walkie if there is a lockdown situation. All of our classrooms also are now outfitted with telephones, with like the old-fashioned cords, where you can call another classroom or you can call the main office. That's something that we've invested in over the past couple of years. We are doing lockdown drills. It adds anxiety, but I do think it is important that our students and our staff get used to what, how to respond to a lockdown situation. So we do three a year, and this year, we added a fourth if the third one had not been done in June. And so these are lockdown active shooter situations. All of our schools have safety plans. Those safety plans have been reviewed by the district. We'll review them again going into next year. They should be reviewed with staff. That is a requirement of principals. And we'll have two community meetings. We'll have two this year, by the end of this year. And every year, therefore, we will have two. One in the first semester, one in the second semester to review the safety plan at each individual school. We are reviewing the opportunity to invest in decon radios. I'm getting a bit in the weeds, but the advantage of a decon radio is that you can communicate to someone outside of the building if we're in a lockdown situation. Having been a former principal, if in a crisis situation, you cannot rely just on your cellphone because there will be many people talking to you or trying to talk to you, and you have to talk to someone from the outside, usually the lead of police or security at that particular moment. It allows everyone also to communicate on one frequency outside of cell phones, which in a crisis, the cell phones often won't work because the cell towers are overwhelmed. So with a decon radio, if we're in a lockdown, serious situation, the principal will be able to communicate with the chief of police, also possibly with me, or anyone else in central office that needs to relay information or the principal needs to relay information. I'm going to jump a bit to say that our police department and DPD have been much better coordinated over the last year about how to respond to an active shooter situation. Who takes responsibility? We'll also be doing simulations, not with students in the school. I don't want to do that. And we can have passionate debates about that, but I'm not interested in a real active shooter simulation with someone running around with a real gun or a fake gun in a school. So we'll do a simulation in, in our buildings without children there where we can coordinate DPD and DPSCD response. In addition to that, all of us have, have now received many more robo calls, robo texts about crises in schools. One reason for that is not necessarily that there's been an increase in negative situations in school. What is different is we're actually communicating that transparently to staff and to parents. So when there's a gun, when there's a knife, when there's a serious threat made against an employer or a student, we share that information. Even four, three years ago, I found that there were incidents that were occurring in schools, and they were not necessarily shared at central office. I think over the last two years in particular, last year, I would say, we have dramatically improved communications from schools to central office and increased the accountability of principals to be honest with what's happening in their building, especially around weapons and threats. And so threats, and you'll see this articulated a bit better in the code of conduct when it comes back to the board this summer. But we are requiring that every threat be thoroughly investigated. And so what that means is, if a student says, "I'm going to shoot this place up," we investigate. What, how does that investigation look like? Well, we interview the student. We interview the family, and we may go as far as sending an officer to the home to determine if there is access to a weapon. And so that's how thorough we're being if something's written on a piece of paper about killing someone or wanting to kill someone, or having dreams about a mass shooting. All of that is actively investigated. Not only an interview of the student, but an interview with the family and a possible home visit to the home to determine if weapons are available to do harm. In most cases, I would say, if there is a threat made, we share that with staff and with students that a threat was made and it was investigated. More times than not, when that, after that threat is made, that student will not be returning to that school. There are some differences because we have to be sensitive to special education issues and some others, but for the most part, when threats are made, that student is not returning to that school. And lastly, I would say, we can talk a lot about police. We can talk about security. We can talk about radios. But at the end of the day, and the board chair already mentioned this, the best detection in order to prevent a tragedy in one of our schools is to have our attendants, our antennas up and to be hypersensitive about what our children are saying and what are they doing. Unfortunately, I've read the FBI reports on mass shootings. And when I read those reports, almost all of them could be prevented if we were more sensitive and more tuned to what our students are saying, especially negatively saying about themselves or about others. The rise in mass shootings, when you really look at the research, it's coupled to a couple of factors. One, mental health. Just more attention, more resources, more focus on identifying mental health issues and providing support. And this is not in an order. Access to assault weapons. And the ability to easy access those weapons in this country, especially more so in other states, and then doing harm based on that access. Negative impact of social media, whether it's threats glorifying violence, making it insensitive and threatening and being insensitive to others. And the active role of parents. Those are all factors that have been coupled with the increase, especially in school mass shootings. Many of those things that I, those four things I named can be prevented with the right kind of involvement and attention to detail around mental health issues. So I've said this for 20 years, always working in the toughest schools in our country, whether it's from the Bronx to Detroit to Miami, is that the best metal detector is a detection and a relationship with children. Even with metal detectors, weapons can get in schools. Even with metal detectors, bad things can happen to staff and children. It's when we are very sensitive to what students are saying, what they're not saying, how they're acting, and we actually act on it with this level of sensitivity and care. That's how we ultimately will continue to keep our students and our staff safe and providing the wraparound services to those students of need. And that's why I end the presentation with the last bullet. And we've talked a lot about this as a board over the last five years. That's been increased with COVID. But we are moving in a direction of trying to create health hubs with a concentration of just better wellness overall. And when we talk about wellness, we're talking about health. We're talking about mental health. And so our schools need to focus on student achievement, teaching and learning. But we're not going to get to the academics if we're not reaching the whole child. And I think we've made investments in our districts with more guidance counselors, more social workers. We've tried with psychologists, but mainly contracted that work out. All of our schools now have access to mental health support through contracted services, unfortunately paid through COVID. We are optimistic that we can fund that after COVID relief funding. But if you are a student and you're hearing this and you need help, ask for help. If you're a family member and you know your child needs help, ask for help. If you're an employee and you see a student that needs help, then reach out to the right person at the school level to provide this. then reach out to the right person at the school level to provide the support. At least now as a district, we have the support to provide. We now just have to be more honest about the needs and be willing, at least on the family level, to sign off on the consent to provide the support. And the district is going to take greater ownership of getting out those consent forms, especially by the beginning of next year, so that when there is a need and there's a willingness to provide the support or receive the support, it can be provided. But ultimately, I think that is our best way to continue to make our schools safer. I will end on a positive note that based on our preliminary results, on our survey results, our students did feel more safe this year than they did in 1920. And I can only go by the survey results that were provided. And that's preliminary, that's not official because we're still running the data. But overall, this year versus 1920, the year that the pandemic hit, apples to apples, our students felt safer this year than they did the year before the pandemic. I'm sure there's many, many reasons for that. But that is a positive note, at least where we are as a school system. But there's much, much more work that needs to be done. And we'll continue to own the process of creating better systems and processes and continue to learn how to make a safer environment for our staff and our students.
Thank you, Dr. Viti. A lot of information shared. I'll first open it up to the board. Any questions or comments as it relates to the superintendent's report? Go ahead, Vice President.
I'm gonna go back to student achievement.
Just come to the mic, please. Use that mic.
I'm gonna go back to the student achievement portion of the report. Good information. We're improving based on last year. But we still know we've got lots of work to do to get achievement where it needs to be. So I'm trying to see, are there professional development sessions that we're gonna have during the work week so that building cells will be there? Because I know in the summer, teachers are tired and don't necessarily come back for professional development. I'm just trying to see how we're gonna actually focus in on that, if you will help me with that.
Well, through the chair, based on how long this year has felt, we really need a summer of rest. And I think that's going to be even more important because we're ending at a later date and we're starting at least one week earlier. Now, I'm optimistic about how negotiations are doing, are going with the calendar. I think we will have a calendar that is definitely shorter, meaning we'll get out of school earlier, much earlier than we did this year. And I think that we'll have more opportunity for professional development next year during the school year. So we're still negotiating the details, but I, I think the administration and our unions are on the same page that we need more time for professional development during the school day. But we continue as a district to offer professional development in the summer, after school, paid after school, even going into next year. But ultimately, we want more professional development during the day and possibly looking at aligning our calendar more to what suburban districts have done with having more PD days and looking at what that means from a balance of PD days and instructional days.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent Viti. The only reason I was asking is because we know the research says that if there is not professional development aligned to those skills that we need to increase, then ultimately, the achievement route might be more difficult for us to get to. So I appreciate you mentioning that. I'm just concerned that before we can really focus and target in on what needs to increase with achievement, we gotta make sure the teachers are trained in that area with those strategies. But thank you for bringing that forward, unless you were gonna add something else to it.
I would just add that, just your, I answered your question about professional development. I didn't say it in the presentation, but we do provide, unfortunately today, active shooter professional development for any staff through our frontline system. And then we do have officers within our police department that are also, have been trained in active shooter, but are going to enhance their training to be a train to trainer type of model so we can have more work with staff at schools and entire faculties on more active shooter training. I'm just using that as a connector based on your questions in my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll wait because the next part was gonna be about safety.
Go ahead, because that's where my, oh, my question is on.
Oh, okay. So thank you for that very thorough report. And I was going back to what we talked about at the curriculum committee meeting when we talked about metal detectors and wands and things of that nature and the number of those that are not working correctly in buildings. And I just wanted to see, are we gonna be doing any specific additional training? Or yes, I know building relationships is the best thing. But what, which, which direction or help me to know what we're gonna do with that that we already have that's not working?
So specific to active shooting?
Yes, just being the kids being safe, period. Because I know we talked about, you talked about the metal detectors, they're okay. But the real way to get to kids feeling safe is through the relationships that we're building as staff. Again, that's professional development and what have you. So I'm just trying to see what we're doing with what we have that maybe is not working.
Well, we do have professional development targeting that. I think that the issue is time. And that goes back to your earlier question is, once a school year starts, it just starts to roll. And it's hard to do professional development, if you will, and offering. Because we do offer it, it's paid after school, but it's, teachers are tired. And they sometimes, you know, just want to go home and rest, grade papers for the next day. So it's, what we're, we're trying to do is have more embedded professional development during the day and the year where there can be, if you will, timeouts during instruction and you can focus on professional development. And that's where we can do more training on detection of trauma, on how to build better, how to build better relationships with students. So all of that, we have the training to do, we just need more time to do it.
Thank you. Okay. Couple of questions. So Dr. Viti, we mentioned, as you mentioned, emulating some of the other districts, their excellence is part of what they're doing, not looking like any other district because we aren't like any other district. We are very unique in our own space. And that's something to be proud of, so it's not, it's not a bad thing. But when people are doing things well, are we trying to emulate best practices? And I'm thinking about the professional development. How are other school districts doing their professional development for their teachers? When are they doing it?
Similar to us, they'll do it in the summer, they'll do it after school. Some have negotiated with their unions to do it on certain days of the month at the school level. But a common practice is to utilize what the state allows, which is converting instructional days to professional development days. So some districts, so districts in Michigan can use up to six instructional days for professional development. So as long as 75% or more of teachers attend the professional development for that day, then that can be counted as an instructional day. So the state of Michigan requires 180 instructional days. And so six of those days can be used for professional development as long as 75% of teachers attend. Right now, DPSCD is using zero instructional days for professional development. So I think as we look to the future, that's an opportunity to be more aligned with other districts, but also to expand the time for professional development in order to raise student achievement and just break up the difficulty of just daily ongoing instruction.
So I know you're in constant communication with our unions to help make sure that that is reflective of what's being asked as well. Two quick questions around safety. So we talked about the badges that everybody wears and they're color coded. Even the board, we have badges when we're in schools. What about parents who are coming to volunteer for the day? Maybe it's recess, maybe it's lunch, maybe it's in the classroom. How are they identified and what is that process? Because, you know, we welcome our parents. However, some parents I've seen, I used to be one, right? Where it's like, oh, okay, go to the office first. We know you're trying to go to, you know, Ms. Mitchell Forrest class, but you must report to the office first and not come in and go straight to an area without being checked in, so to speak. So what is that process?
So most schools use a, some form of sticker. Usually at the minimum, they'll put a sticker, they'll give you a sticker, like, you know, my name is, type of sticker that recognizes who that person is. Or some may have their own, I wouldn't call it an ID, but some kind of form of identification with a lanyard that would go on a parent that's there for a day. Now, if a volunteer is more consistent in the school, then they would get something equivalent to the employee ID card, but with a different color to identify that person, not as an employee, but as a consistent volunteer.
Okay. So I'm more in favor of the lanyards versus the stickers? So if we think about what that looks like, a basic sticker, just so that it's easily identifiable to know that the parent should be in the building? And then what are we doing to creatively recruit? So, and I'll go back to your point about, and I think, can you just elaborate for the community on allocations versus bodies? So allocations, you know, well, why is it only one security guard? However, the school is allocated for three. So can you just talk about that real quick, please?
Sure. So, you know, the, the filling of a position or the, a person being in a position starts with the allocation. So all of our schools are allocated at least one security guard. If they don't have a security guard, that means that the principal now or in the fall wants a greeter instead of a security guard. At the minimum, all schools have at least one security guard or a greeter. As we go into next year, I think we'll be down to only 10 schools that want a greeter, not a security guard. And then based on the square footage of the building, based on the size of the student population, and just based on incidents that have occurred over the last, let's say, three years, that's an anomaly now with the pandemic, but let's just say generally incidents, then we increase the security guard allocation from one to, you know, some schools have up to six. And so that's revisited every year, again, based on student population, square footage, and incidents at a school. Now, we allocate the security guard allocation and then central office and the school work together to fill the position. So, for example, at the beginning of this year, we all remember that it was hard to staff, especially with for security guards, because for a year and a quarter, we didn't really need security guards because our schools were open as learning centers, but not for day to day instruction. So we had very few security guards that stayed with the district during the pandemic. They left because of fears of COVID. And over the summer break, most of our security, well, our security guards are not hired over the summer unless they're working summer school. So during the pandemic, that was not, we had very little summer school happening. So then when we decided to open and we agreed to go in person this past year, we had to scale up staffing in an environment that was very hard to recruit hourly people. So we had security allocation, we just didn't have it filled. We went to $16 an hour and then we rapidly filled those vacancies at the beginning of the year. But there were still some schools that, for example, had four security guards, but only had one of those positions filled. So there is a difference between what we're allocating to intend to fill and then what is actually filled. It's not that we're shortchanging schools, it's just a challenge with hiring. And so once we went to $16 an hour, we had, if I recall, we were, we were basically fully staffed by around October, November with security guards. The market expanded with hourly opportunities. And so then we had vacancies. And that, those vacancies are now at about 20 when you look at the security guard allocation. And it's very hard to hire security guards right now because they're not gonna be hired for two weeks. And then we're willing to hire them for two weeks, but then they're on, we don't employ them over the summer unless they're working summer school. So that's the challenge, is that the security guard position are not 12-month positions. They're 10-month positions. And folks need to work over the summer, so they'll leave the district for another job.
Okay. And then I just want to make sure that we are continuing to prioritize mental health as we go forward. So whatever we need to do as we talk about COVID dollars being released and drying up, that we continue to prioritize mental health as we go forward. I think we have numbers to support that we need to continue to do that. Any more questions for the superintendent as it relates to his report? Go ahead, Member Gay, Doc.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So earlier this year, or last year, at one point, we were dealing with the number of officers that were being offered or, from their perspective, being coerced to take a buyout. Where are we with our numbers of having our police officers total? And I know they're categorized in different, at different levels. I heard the 11 high school officers, I heard the 11 feeder pattern officers. But can we just get an accounting for the different levels of officers and security guards that we have? The difference from the time that they were offered the buyout and how many have left the district and where we are now? I guess I'm trying to figure out, what's our total number? Because I'm not, I'm not clear.
So we have, we have 23, about 23 police officers that are employed by the district. These are not, we have 26 police officer positions. I think we have about 23 filled police officer positions, give or take. That's not including lieutenants or central office staff. These are just police officers that are allocated to schools. And then we have two campus security officers. Those are armed officers that are not sworn officers. We have two. At the beginning of the year, I want to say we had about 10, 10 or 12 campus officers. And now we have two. And I want to say we had about 20 police officers off the top of my head. The security allocation, I can give you the exact number. I believe it's 150, 150, between 120 to 150 security guards that we employ throughout the district. And right now, we have 18 vacancies. I can give the exact numbers and put it all in writing to you. But I'm pretty confident on the police officer number and the campus officer number. The security guard, I know we definitely have 18 vacancies. The total allocation, like I said, I think it's 130 to 150.
Thank you, through the chair. If I can understand, so basically with 120 to 130 security guards, we will have an allocation per pupil, based on student population at each school on the inside. And then the police officers at the high schools will be outside. And then the feeder patterns will circulate from the K through eight schools.
Yeah, so, yes, let me say it and then you tell me if you're saying the same thing. So the, the, so at CAS, King, and Renaissance, the officer will be basically permanently placed in those three schools. For the 11, what I would call neighborhood high schools, the officer will spend at least 80% of their time at that school, inside and out. Especially at lunch, they'll be inside, but mainly outside for arrival and dismissal. And then throughout the day, in and out. To be clear, they will spend, like I said, 80% of their time at the neighborhood high school. And if there's a major issue in that feeder pattern, then they will leave to help the other officer at that location. Or if there's a bigger issue that requires multiple officers, then they'll leave in order to address that. On the days that that officer On the days that that officer is absent, um, then the other officer that is assigned to that feeder pattern will be that officer's backup. So they will fill that role at the school that day. Then we get in a difficult situation if both people are out on one day. And that's the challenge we have, just, you know, staffing across the board. So, uh, the security guard is always at the school inside the building.
Right, okay. Inside the building, right, okay.
You good, Member Gaydaknogo?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Vidi, last question. Where are the safety plans housed in writing for each school? Where can stakeholder, parent, anyone see the safety plans for, for schools?
Through the principal.
Through the principals.
Yeah. And, and just to clarify, 140 security guards.
That's what we have now.
That's what we'll have going into next year. That, that, that's the allocation, 140.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I didn't hear that.
140.
140.
Okay, thank you.
So that means the 18 vacancies will be filled with that?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else before we move into the next agenda item?
Ma- Madam Chair, I think you, you asked to a degree. And I, I just want to make sure we're, we're clear on every school, every board member, having that active shooter training. I know that has been mentioned previously on what that schedule is and what that looks like. I think that was part of the report. But if you could just reiterate what, what the scheduling is of all the officers, security guards, and then staff receiving that, as well as us as a board?
So we, we're prepared, uh, for that training. I think that there was an attempt to do it today, but then with the budget hearing, it complicated the schedule. But, uh, we're ready, um, as far as our presentation is concerned, to provide active shooter training for, uh, in the board meeting scenario and at the Fisher Building if we happen to be there or a board member is in the office, uh, if something like that tragically happens. So we're ready on our end. We just need to work on a date and then, uh, we'll turn Key the presentation.
Thank you.
Did you get your other question answered about the three that's required per school? And these are in addition to, because I asked this, fire drills and weather drills. The active shooter is in itself by itself. So if they haven't done the three yet per year, then June is the month where they'll be doing their final one. Okay, anything else?
I think that's it.
Okay. All right. So I know we have four board members here. One has another obligation. So we want to make sure, uh, while we have a forum, if the public can bear with us for one second, as we move to item number 12 on the agenda, administrative terminations. I know the board has had an opportunity to look at and ask questions around these, if there are any discomfort as it relates to this. So if not, there would be no need for a closed session. Is there any discomfort with 12.01, 12.02, or 12.03?
No, Madam, no, Madam Chair, I would move, if, if we could, to, um, tie bar 12.01 through 12.03.
Is there, oh, it's been properly moved by Member Gaydaknogo, properly supported by Vice President Hunter Harvell to tie bar 12.01 through 12.03? And we know that 12.03 is a recommendation for employment. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of tie bar 12.01 through 12.03 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Now the chair entertain a motion for the tie bar of 12.01 through 12.03.
Motion to, motion for the tie bar of 12.01 to 12.03.
Is there any discussion? Is there support?
Support.
All those in favor of the tie bar 12.01 through 12.03 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Oh, I just had to say, okay. So, uh, Member Vaughn, thank you for joining us. We know you've been at CAS Tech's graduation all evening, so thank you.
All day.
All day. Five, over 500 graduates, so we knew that was going to be a long day. So, um, legal counsel has provided a legal settlement for our consideration. So if there's no reservation, the chair entertain a motion to approve the recommended settlement?
I know that we approved the recommended settlement.
Is there support to approve the recommended settlement?
Support.
It's been properly moved by Vice President Hunter Harvell, supported by Member Gaydaknogo. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor of approving the legal settlement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Bear with us, public, this is the last item. Uh, item number 13, consent agenda. The chair entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda, which would be 13.01 through 13.27. And just for the community, when items are on the consent agenda, that means that they have gone through committees and had discussion in committees. There, uh, is there a motion to move item 13, the consent agenda items?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may, I, I do support, um, the tie bar. But what I'd like to do is make a recommendation because I'm, I'm continuing to receive inquiry. I know that we have it on our, on our board docs. I know that we have it in our committee meetings. But what I would like to suggest for the purpose of full transparency is to list on our agenda the amount of contracts. So it's really clear for, um, our citizens, um, uh, as they attempt to follow what we're doing in our board, um, so we can discuss that maybe at a later time. But I just really would like that recommendation because I'm continuing to receive ongoing inquiry about things that, um, are on our board docs. But nonetheless, I think it will be, make it helpful for lay citizens to see it even when they're approved on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. So we can take that offline. Let's look, let's think about what that needs to look like, um, beyond what is currently provided. Thank you, Member Gaydaknogo. Is there, uh, any discussion on the, we have a motion right on the floor for this? Okay, we need a motion on the floor for the consent agenda.
Motion to tie bar all the items on the consent agenda from 11, no, from 13.01 to 13.27.
Is there support? It's been properly moved by Member Gaydaknogo, properly supported to accept the consent agenda items, which would be 13.01 through 13.27. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Thank you, community, for bearing with us. We'll now go into public comment. Okay, public comment. Members of the public are welcome to address the board during public comment. Individuals wishing to address the board must register and receive an identification number. The chair will call the numbers for individuals to address the board during public comment. Please remain seated until your number is called. For virtual public comment, members of the public are also welcome to address the board through virtual public comment. Virtual public comment will be facilitated through a Zoom webinar. Individuals wishing to address the board may do so by choosing one of two options. One, through your computer, select the raise your hand option on the screen. Or two, through your telephone, press star nine and that raises your hand on the telephone. To register, log onto the meeting and complete one of these options prior to the chair announcing the close of public comment registration. The meeting administrator will select the individuals in the order received. You will remain muted until it is your time to speak. All comments, whether virtual or in person, will be limited to three minutes. The superintendent will reply to questions or concerns raised today that do not violate ethical or legal standards, confidentiality, privacy of others, or requires additional information to respond. If you would like a direct response to your question and/or concern, please forward an email to the Secretary of the Board, vanya more@vanya dot more@detroitk12.org. So we will first move into our public comment for those who are in the building with us. Is it one mic or two? Just one? Okay. So we have Grace Tokars. And next, uh, Jason Posey will be following, uh, Grace Tokars.
Good evening. My name is Grace Tokars and I teach French at Henry Ford High School. I also volunteered to teach a sixth-hour additional social studies class. I am not getting paid correctly for teaching that class, per Dr. Vidi. On October 26th, Dr. Vidi sent an email to all teachers entitled, Enhanced Voluntary Sixth-Hour Supplement. The email was to inform us of a pay increase. The email was also a call for more teachers. This email detailed in number charts and anecdotes how each teacher's step would be paid. The rate of 1/8 was to increase to 1/6 of the hourly rate, starting with quarter two. My total by the end of the year would come to $13,000. However, my paycheck does not reflect these numbers. Teachers are paid a salary for 195 contract days. As is, my sixth-hour pay is paid per class and only per class that I am present. So for example, when I call in sick or it's too hot to have school, I do not get paid, even though I am responsible for that class. I was, however, paid during our virtual January. To date, I have been paid for 190, sorry, 149 days. If this method of daily calculation is to be believed, then it is impossible for any teacher to ever reach the amount and example set forth in Dr. Vidi's email. There are simply not enough days in the school year. To date, I am 46 days short of 195 days, or $3,066.82. In order to receive the amount Dr. Vidi stated in his email, I should be paid the hourly rate for 195 days or my rate should be increased for the days I work. I have spoken to many people about this issue, working my way up the chain of command. First at payroll dot corrections, then with Kalen English and Valerie Hampton in HR, who referred me to Gwen Anderson in labor relations. Per my extemporaneous notes of November 11th, Ms. Anderson told me that she, quote, "agreed with my explanation and had to talk to a supervisor." I have not heard back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tokars. Jason Posey, and next, Dr. Telford.
Good evening, Jason Posey, Detroit Federation of Teachers. I'd like to address two specific issues. First, the punch time issues for our itinerant ancillary staff. I am confused on what problem the district is trying to solve. These individuals are professionals that service many students across multiple schools. They have valuable skill sets and knowledge the average teacher does not. To subject salary professionals to a punch-in and punch-out system is disrespectful. The district already has the means to appropriately deal with any folks taking advantage of their itinerant status. But I venture a guess that it's not actually that big of an issue at scale. I'd like the educators on the school board to think back to their frontline classroom days. Imagine one or two students refusing to follow the classroom norms and you decide to punish the entire class. I think an administrator may question your classroom management skills during your evaluation. So let's do the same thing when we think about the use of punch time for an entire set of professional salary employees. I reiterate, the district already has the means and capacity to address this issue. Secondly, I'd like to address the Detroit Virtual School. Everyone acknowledges that the Virtual School is a work in progress for students, teachers, school-based administrators, and the district. With that in mind, I am again perplexed as to why the teachers are disciplined when they never had the adequate tools to truly succeed. Works in progress often evolve. Goals change as we expect the outcomes. Yet staff was disciplined by administration for things which may longer, may no longer be germane to their job duties. Staff was also expected to succeed teaching in the same space with multiple colleagues, attempting to impart knowledge to online classrooms, some with over 100 students. And according to Charpeet on June 8th, 77% chronic student absenteeism. Now staff are being asked to, in essence, reapply for their jobs. I again am speaking to the educators on the board. Think back to your classroom days. Imagine downgrading a student for not meeting expectations when you didn't provide them the appropriate foundation to succeed. That is what the district is doing to the staff at DBS. Let's continue to work on getting the Virtual School right by including the voices of those teachers that sought to be there at its inception. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. As Dr. Telford makes his way to the microphone, Jennifer Pasha or Pasha will be next after Dr. Telford.
I apologize. Thing hasn't rung all day. I'm at a meeting. I want to commend, um, Dr. Vidi for his, uh, report this evening. It was very concise, specific, and, uh, certainly student safety has to be our number one concern, uh, even, even before academics. Because if our kids aren't safe, what else are we about? I would, though, like to say that, uh, I continue to have some concerns that I would like to air, but I'm going to, I'm going to air them in some recommendations, uh, to you in writing because I think they are a little longer, uh, than they would be if I spoke for three minutes here this evening. Uh, but my concerns are, uh, in relation to the reading program. Uh, because if we don't teach our kids to read, I mean, what are we about? And what are they going to be about in life? So, um, I will be putting some of those concerns in writing, uh, to the administration and the board. Um, I can give you a couple of hints. You know, one of them is that I think that the Quick to Learn Program, the Two-Signa Program, needs in some way to be amalgamated, uh, with the Beyond Basics Program. Uh, if, if, if that could happen, I think it would be a good thing. I also am of the opinion that, uh, we probably need to offer reading instruction in, in, um, in, in the science of reading to classroom teachers, probably homeroom teachers from grade four to grade six and to subject area teachers, uh, at the secondary level. Uh, because I can tell you from, from personal experience now, you know, I've been working in the high schools for some time. Uh, I am finding that my students cannot read. Uh, this is not, uh, this is not the fault of current staff. We've had COVID, we've had all kinds of challenges, and, and the school district has been doing some good things. But you know, it's all for naught if our kids can't read. And right now, we need to give that concern our ongoing attention. There was one other thing that I just wanted to, to, to share with you. You know, I'm trying very hard, uh, to get the mayor and, uh, the leadership of the city council to give some serious attention to putting a 200-meter track over at Chandler Park because they've got a $12.6 million facility there. That's going to be a domed field house. We need to get a 200-meter track in there and we need to, to, to make sure that there are stands so that we can have our...
Thank you, Dr. Telford. We have Jennifer Pasha? Please pronounce it.
Pasha.
Pasha, Jennifer Pasha. And then Mother Moore, you're next, Helen Moore.
Good evening, everybody. Um, again, my name is Jennifer Pasha. I'm the Operations Manager of Bailey Park Neighborhood Development Corporation. We are a totally funded 501(c)(3) located right across from her on, in the McDougal Hunt area. My comments on behalf of Bailey Park are in total excitement and support for what we're hoping will be, and we know, will be the reopening of the old Ralph Bunch School located on Allery between Charlevoile and Hendrick's. We're very excited because this area, uh, has been a low-dense area. And our organization is so excited because there's so much that we're doing right now. And this would be total support with the school. We haven't had a public school in our area, in that area for decades. So we are very excited. Bailey Park is, we have a beautiful park located on Elmwood between the same side cross streets as the school. And the kids can go over there. We got funding for a Kaboom Playground, which we have, as well as outdoor fitness equipment. We offer many programs. We hire within our own neighborhood, our, uh, residents who are part of our grounds crew who go around and cut some of these bad-looking lots that are around and hopefully do even more, including where the school resides. Uh, we also do, we also provide, uh, programs such as tech-savvy seniors. Our hot meals program for our seniors in our area, as well as providing food. We also are doing a Salesforce program. We're very excited about what's happening. And of course, we're excited... And of course, we're excited because we're obtaining more land so that we can now do an agricultural garden as well as a historical alleyway and loop, which is going to tie into what's happening with the Dequender Cut, as well as the fact that we're very excited about what we're doing with getting for the future. That's why it's so great for the school coming in. We also excited because we're getting ready to start doing affordable housing and also mixed-use commercial. We're also working with, in conjunction with some of our grassed business owners, a beautification corridor for the grassed area. So, we're on the move. We're excited. We want to welcome all the Chrysler parents who are probably going to be involved with these children that are going to be shipped over to the school to attend an event that we have on July seventeenth, which is going to be the Good Old Days Senior Event, where seniors can come and have food, share memories of what's happening, as well as enjoy dancing and that kind of camaraderie. We're so excited, and thank you all so much for looking into our area and helping us to make this the most beautiful area for our city. We're very excited, and we thank you for that. And if there's anything that we can do to help support with Bailey Park, that is exactly what we're going to do. And thank you so much for your time and all you've done. And I did graduate from private school, but I was a member of the public school. I went to that school years ago, and so did my family for over four decades, so four generations. So, we're very excited. Thank you so much for your time. All the best. Continued success.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Sharon Evans after Mother Moore.
The school board approves contract to Beyond Basics. The district's school board approved a fourteen-million-dollar contract to Beyond Basics, where Dr. Viti's wife is employed. Keep the Vote No Takeover Coalition is questioning, does this violate the Finance Procurement Board policy, which states that this policy exemplifies integrity, discipline, excellence, and adherence to relevant laws and board policies and procedures? We question what appears to be a conflict of interest that was questioned by one board member before the vote was taken, but she still voted to give the contract to Beyond Basics. The contract allowed the Southfield-based organization to scale up its operation over two years to serve fifteen hundred students. We question this amount of money to be spent on only fifteen hundred students. How much does this break down to be spent on each student? We figured approximately nine thousand dollars. Also, the month before, the district awarded a nearly one-million-dollar contract to Brain Spring, a company that provides literacy intervention for students in grade K-three as well, K-two-three, as well as students attending the district's virtual school. Meanwhile, before the pandemic, our organization, Keep the Vote No Takeover, volunteer program called Let's Read, connected adult volunteers to the community who helped K-two-three students with reading in order to prevent the students from failing the state test, which would cause the students to be held back. In the meantime, there was a community black business, Quick-to-Learn, who decided to help our students read. Met with Dr. Viti's assistant, Ms. Wright, who, after hearing the presentation, tore up the written plan in their face, as was reported to us. Ms. Wright is no longer working for D P S. She is in Cincinnati as the superintendent. The Quick-to-Learn owners were blocked out of being a part of the effort to improve our students' reading level, while certain other companies were approved. We are demanding that there be an investigation of this matter and other decisions of violations of school board policy, of nondiscrimination, and the hiring practices by the superintendent, D P S.D., Dr. Viti, and the support of the present board that does not seem to know the law and are content to rubber stamp the decision of the superintendent without proper investigation by the hiring practices of D P S.D. We say that this is wrong, and we've downed through the years, fifty years, I've seen these mistakes made. And what happens after that? Our school system is taken over because the state...
Thank you, Mother Moore. We'll address that when it's time. During, when we address public comment, we will address that again, which we did months ago. We will address that again. For those who may be unaware... I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Evans.
Good evening. As Jason Posey came up and spoke of some incidents that are going on with teachers, I would like to piggyback on that as well. Teachers are being harassed in many forms, especially in the form of excessive walkthroughs. Teachers are reporting grave mental illnesses, and nobody cares. Teachers are receiving at least thirty or more walkthroughs per year, on top of the three observations of Cycle Zero, Cycle One, and Cycle Two, which is used for evaluations. Every walkthrough includes something negative. It's called a grow, and it chips away at a teacher's self-esteem, and it is deliberate psychological bullying. This is constant unreasonable criticism, which is a form of workplace harassment and results in depression, anxiety, and other mental or physical disorders that teachers are reporting, and that's why a lot of them are leaving the district. All of this is a violation of E E O C and OSHA. At the last board meeting, Dr. Viti spoke on how doctors, medical doctors, are observed to discuss practices. However, those medical doctors are observed mostly by their peers and their students. Rarely are they observed by their supervisor on a weekly basis. Dr. Viti also spoke on how walkthroughs provide a chance to discuss teacher practices. However, as a teacher, practices have been discussed since they became a teacher. Practices are discussed during hall duty, lunchtime, preps, P Ds, and P L Cs. There is plenty of discussion going on with peers and administration. When teachers report excessive walkthroughs, they are not supported. Instead, they are retaliated by their administrator, which, according to the Board of Education, is a violation of the anti-arassment policy. These practices are a consequence of unethical leadership. And according to the Office of Inspector General, it states poor morale and hostile relationships are some of the consequences and are proof of unethical leadership. Under the Emergency Manager, excessive walkthroughs were practiced to intimidate, harass, bring hostility, and is still occurring. People, you are looking at a possible lawsuit in violation of unethical practices and workplace harassment. Please decrease walkthroughs and other hostile practices for the sake of teacher sanity. And given the rise in mass shootings, all classroom doors should stay locked. Any visits must be appointed, have appointments to be scheduled. Observations for each cycle is enough to see how well a teacher teaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We have Melzita Davis and Elena Larson. Melzita Davis, and next Elena Larson.
Thank you. Alrighty, good evening. My name is Melzita Davis, and I'm an E S E teacher for D P S.C.D., representing the mighty, mighty D F T. I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak to you today, and I would like to address my concerns regarding safety and continuity throughout the district. In terms of safety, I see a genuine need for safety equipment in all schools. When I refer to safety equipment, I am specifically speaking to metal detectors, wand, I D checkers, cameras, and specific safety screening methods. In regards to continuity, I would like to see a set standard at all schools throughout the district. Some schools have two security offices, where perhaps there should be four. I am told that the number of security offices is determined by the number of incidents at the schools. However, are the number or incidents padded to not appear as if the schools have had as many behavior problems, which makes it look bad on the school administration? I'm not sure how the district determines the amount of safety equipment at a lot of per-school. Do students enter at one door throughout all schools at D P S.C.D.? And I did hear you say that, Dr. Viti, in your presentation. However, I'm going to tell you, at my school, all the students are special needs and to have walkers, wheelchairs, students that walk slow. We cannot walk in one door. So, it's just not practical. And like I put it here, it's not practical. And with that said, what is the solution to determine how many metal detectors are needed per-school? Will students go through a metal detector screening process every day? Will go through one door? Or will some students get winded? How are we going to work that out? And what is the screening process for visitors? I'll just tell you really quickly. At my granddaughter's school, I came in with cupcakes, happy. It was kindergarten. I thought I was doing a good thing. I couldn't walk past the door. I would drop the cupcakes off and turn around and have a nice day. And I know at our schools, I have seen parents just storm through. I'm coming to see my daughter, and they just go straight to the classroom and do what they want to do. So, I know we need to tighten up the visitor process. And also with the I D checkers, too. We need to have this continuity through all schools. Like, our school had an updated camera system. I would like that done at all schools, but my time is running out. So, I'm going to jump through that and say this, Dr. Viti. One last thing. I'm advocating for continued COVID testing for students in center-based schools this summer. This is especially important because students in these settings often can't talk, so they can't say, I have a sore throat. I have a fever. We deal with runny noses. Two of my students in my class don't wear masks. Another class of students don't wear, four students don't wear masks. And so, I cannot properly do my job six feet away. They often push the shields out. So, we really need to continue COVID testing for students in center-based schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We have Elena Larson and Jamal Mohammed. So, Elena Larson and Jamal Mohammed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elena Larson. I am at Schultz on the northwest side, and I want to talk a little bit about building conditions tonight. As Dr. Viti said earlier in the meeting, that this is the longest school year ever, and we are going back to school for employees. I think we're scheduled to come back August twenty-second. A concern I have for my building and the other twenty-five buildings with summer school is that the custodial staff and the different contracts we have, the different contractors, will not be able to adequately deep-clean and prepare the schools for the new school year. On a normal year, and I've been teaching almost twenty-two years, it's very difficult for the custodians to clean the building and wax the floors and get everything painted, and just so the way we want it to be, the way the board wants it to be, the way that our parents and our students want it to be for the upcoming school year. We're talking about having four weeks of summer school, then a very brief three-week period to turn around the schools. Now, again, in an ordinary year before COVID, this was difficult at best. Now, we're talking about staffing shortages. I know for my building, there's like four main people that clean our building. I get there at seven fifteen, they're there. I leave around five-thirty, they're still there. I think we are very fortunate at Schultz to have the dedication of the crew we have through G D I. I'm not sure if every other teacher that is here tonight or in the district can say that about the cleanliness of their building. And I do feel that, I know that Dr. Viti has provided us with a number. I'm not sure people are comfortable calling because they think there's going to be retaliation because of it, either within their building, or, I don't know. I mean, people get scared. It's a reasonable thing. But I just really want to make sure that when we're making this commitment to go back to school this early, that our buildings are ready and welcoming to receive our students. Not with furniture in the halls, not with stairwells not waxed yet, just the best they can be so we can start this new school year in a better frame and ready to really recoup the losses we've had over the last two school years. Thank you again for hearing me speak, parents and community. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Jamal Mohammed and Tracy Thornton. Jamal Mohammed and Tracy Thornton.
Good evening. My name is Jamal Mohammed. I wanted to speak to a few points. Dr. Viti, you talked about tenants that we have in the school district and one that being goals and making sure that we decreasing that. One of the issues that I found in being a tenants' agent, especially working at schools that don't have transportation, is that staff members or the parents are not comfortable with the students being able to get on the public bus transportation because we don't have a bus route at those schools like Detroit Alliance Academy and other alternative schools that don't offer the bus route transportation. So, wondering, is there something that could be done about that? Because just giving us the students the bus calls, that's one of the things that's hindering in our attendance. And the climate and culture within our building, I feel like it's one of the most important things. And when I talk about climate and culture, I'm not talking about the climate and culture within the students, but the climate and culture within the staff and the leadership and the principals and assistant principals, and how the staff members work together is very important. And then also talk about how we can implement conflict resolution trainings within the school district, because it's one thing when students get into fights, and we just send them to I S S and get them on work, but what are we actually doing to try to help to correct that behavior? Because now students feel like, okay, well, I'm just going to I S S, so I got some time off. But can we be able to implement strategies to where we actually teach and train students about what to do about conflict resolution? Like, when you get into an argument, it's not just, I'm about to hit you or do things like that. But what can we do to implement the trainers? And then also talk about, you know, the number of us being inside of COVID and pandemic and being back inside the physical building. You have students that come from a broken home, students that come from homelessness, students and parents that don't have jobs, and they're still trying to figure this out. But what can we do to offer more resources to the parents to where we actually trying to offer those resources that they're able to stay in school and get in school? And then when we have students on our road that are homeless students, we shouldn't have administration or principals just taking those students and taking them off our road and dropping them, because that's totally illegal. And we shouldn't be dropping homeless students. And also talk about the leadership within our buildings, within our principals and assistant principals. You know, when students, oftentimes, they come to school and they're cursing at staff members or where they're having issues or fights and stuff. When students are coming to schools and acting out, that's because there's something that's going on at home. And that's why it's very important, as you talked about, us making sure that we build those relationships with those students. And we shouldn't have principals in the hallways cursing out students or talking to students in any kind of way and embarrass them. But we shouldn't have leadership harassing staff members because they're reporting things and things are being done, and they'll continue to be harassed, and nothing's been done about it.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Tracy Thornton and Dewayne McGrady.
Good afternoon, Dr. Viti and board members. I am Tracy Thornton, Detroit Public School teacher, and also a member of the Detroit Federation of Teachers. I'm here to address Safety and Security Committees, the implementation of this committee. People are going to ask why we're taking so long. A man who investigators believe to be Uvalde Police Chief Aaron Dondo could be heard saying, according to a transcript of officers' body camera footage, "We're trying to preserve the rest of the life." In Uvalde, there were a multitude of failures in the security chain that allowed a mass shooter to gain access to the school and ultimately the classroom, where teachers and their students were horrifically massacred. According to a New York Times article published on June ninth, Uvalde's school superintendent stated that the district was in the process of developing a list of actions we can take to strengthen security in all of our campuses. Part of his plan is to include the hiring of additional school police officers, and officers would be posted at schools during summer sessions. There was not a school police officer at the school when the gunman arrived. arrived. The toll that has been taken on teachers these past two and a half years has been extraordinary, having to endure COVID, social media threats, and school shootings. We now wonder just how much more pain, suffering, frustration, anxiety, and fear we can absorb. We are vulnerable and we feel as if we are expendable, based on how we have been and continue to be viewed and treated in society. Why not allow those of us who are in the most vulnerable positions in this, in this society to decide proactively how much must be done to protect our lives and the lives of those we serve? Teachers act in loco parentis. The legal term means that we are charged factitiously with the parents' rights, duties, and responsibilities to make determinations as parents would if they were present. Therefore, it is not the sole responsibility of the superintendent or the school board to make determinations about the safety and security of teachers and students inside of school buildings. We live and work within a democracy where rights and policies are designed to be shared, not dictated by those that have the privilege of holding positions of power. Let those of us who willingly place ourselves in the position of educating children rather than those who have, who have not advised and designed procedures that determine our fate and the fate of those we serve. We do not ask or desire to be treated as those who are incarcerated, but we need adequate and appropriate protection against those who seek out our buildings and use them as targets where death can occur much too easily. Allow those of us who are physically present and most vulnerable to attacks, not to be future victims, but rather stakeholders in the decision-making process. Allow us to help make the determinations of what types of protections are appropriate and adequate. Allow the implementation of safety and security committees in our district and in each and every school building in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton, for your comments. At this time, we're going to ask Dewayne McGrady. Is Dewayne McGrady present?
Dewan.
Oh, Dewan. Yeah, it reads Dewane. Okay, we'll, we'll make a note of that.
Greetings, school board members, Dr. Viti, and our community. My name is Dewan McGrady, and I currently serve as a resource teacher at Monka Elementary School. And I also currently serve as an executive board member for the Detroit Federation of Teachers. I would like to speak on the topic, strategies to keeping our children and staff safe in all PD, PDSCD schools. Some strategies I would like for you to explore. Host crisis preparedness and response for all, all PDSCD staff, making it mandatory. Installing safety desks for all classroom and offices. Install lockdown shades for all classroom and definitely front office staff. Furnish all classroom with teacher lock doors. Teacher desk, safety desk, lockdown shades, and teacher locks are all special design tools that are especially designed for lockdown emergencies. Provide each classroom with first aid kits. Create an app for all DPSCD students to report suspicious behavior, suspicious media posts, and to ask for mental health support. Since, um, I understand Dr. Viti is not in favor of metal detectors, encourage and/or provide every student with clear book bags. Have every school, every school staff with working access badges. Many times throughout the year, staff will transfer to different buildings. A lot of times, our staff do not have ready access to the buildings with their badges. They have to stand outside and wait for a school staff personnel to come and allow them access to the building. That is definitely a security measure that the district needs to look into. Last but not least, have our security cameras go directly to law enforcement personnel whenever there has been, when it is established that an active shooter is on our campus. Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrady. So we have Mama Redmond and Aleah Moore.
Good evening, Dr. Viti and board members. My main concern is children's safety. If the children is not safe, it will bring out a lot of emotions trying to educate them. Coming up out of a pandemic, they also already have a lot of fear. One thing I will ask, please stop comparing us to other districts. I would ask that they do have metal detectors at all of the schools, and let's not take something that may be considered as a joke too lightly. In the past two months, May 26th, Mary Grove, a gun was brought to school by a student. June 7th, Persian High School, a gun incident was over there. Uh, Airheart School, a gun incident that was in a building to almost, for almost the end of the day was brung into school. June 13th, Cass Tech, it was initial threat. Let's not wait until it's too late to make sure that our children are safe. I take this in, in very, very high consideration that we think about this. We have an oversight of parents that was over the police committee that hasn't met since last year in June. So if we have people that's willing to step up and help at the schools, let's make sure that something happens regarding that, because the children's emotions are already high because of coming out of a pandemic. So let's just make sure we can keep them safe in order to educate them.
Thank you, Mama Redmond. We have Aleah Moore and Monique Smith.
Uh, good evening, board. Um, thank you, uh, for, uh, my public comment.
Pull the mic down one, a little, there you go. Yep, yep, yep. Okay.
Okay, I do appreciate getting a phone call yesterday, um, in anticipation for my daughter, which is a virtual student, receiving some type of recovery. Um, I do appreciate that, um, simply because all year I've been raising hell concerning the virtual setting and, uh, having tutoring for those students. So I do appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to that. Moving forward with the in-person summer school, as you know, this board should know the climate and the, and have a relationship with our parents to know. We don't RSV. The majority of our parents just show up. So in knowing that, being proactive would be keeping staff on standby when we get an influx of students coming in. And that is in the virtual setting as well as in person. Um, Dr. Viti, I hope he is here for answering. Um, but I am, I did email him, and I appreciate his response, but when talking about the books, because the, the public needs to know that the district is trying to eliminate books in the, not this year, but in the upcoming years to come. And we need to know exactly when I emailed Dr. Viti about specifically, when he said in a meeting prior to, that the children are leaning towards virtual books. But when I emailed him to ask, when was this survey done? What kind of survey was it? He said that the survey was never done for the students. So how are we speaking and then justifying, calling the generational gap of not having textbooks versus virtual books? And then saying that the students prefer it, but don't have the data to support it. And that goes with my next statement about creating a database in which, uh, Board Member Sheri Gay-Dagnogo, in the, I believe, academic or financial meeting, spoke about the district creating a solid database that would increase the transparency of all of these contracts being voted on, but not showing the data and improvement in the growth of these babies. And then, and lastly, uh, when we talk about trying to justify and saying that the virtual setting, you know, is a work in progress, and then always basing that on the 70-plus percent of absenteeism, we also need to talk about the actual rate of in-person absenteeism. It's not that far from 70%. We're looking at 60-plus percent. So in the whole district, we have a problem. And then lastly, you all, if you don't want...
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Monique Smith and Gavin Buckley. So Gavin Buckley is after Ms. Monique Smith.
Good evening, DPS.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Good evening, DPS, uh, school board and DPS, uh, community. My name is Monique Smith, and I am the owner of Smithson Bank Court. I would like the opportunity to present my student credit established program and financial literacy service proposal, which was submitted to the DPS school board already. I think that once you read the proposal, you will find that the proposal will be helpful and beneficial with a long-term educational and professional developmental outcome, which models the DPS core values. I would hope for the chance and opportunity to serve the students and districts of DPS. My contact information is a part of the presentation, and I would like to submit a copy to be added to today's agenda if at all possible.
Thank you. Were you done, Ms. Smith? She could get it at the end. You're all set?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Gavin Buckley and Donna Rickman.
Good evening, board and Dr. Viti. I am a proud high school history teacher in this district, as well as a building rep and member of the Detroit Federation of Teachers. I am speaking here tonight because I stand with my union family and their concerns about sixth-hour pay, the unjust ancillary punch-in, punch-out policy, security, and curriculum. We speak not only to improve our working conditions, but in the process to uplift our students and improve their learning conditions. But I am tired. My students are tired. My fellow educators are tired. Tired of so many things, but especially of the state of our classrooms and our schools. I hope you can all agree that it is nearly impossible to focus on learning in a building that is not clean. I hope you can all agree that it is nearly impossible to focus on all the pressures of showing up properly for our students when you're picking yesterday's chip wrappers up off the floor, or chasing down maintenance staff to clean your room, or mop a spill, or ensure that our very important COVID safety cleaning protocols are followed properly. I have nothing but respect for our building maintenance staff. Many of them bust their butt day after day cleaning sometimes two or three floors of a school themselves. That's alone, for mere pennies an hour. But I am here to say that it is high time our district returns to hiring its own maintenance staff instead of contracting with third-party companies like GDI that have no real connection to our schools. Our current two-year contract with GDI is worth $84 million, and I'll tell you from my perspective, it might not be the paper that it's worth the paper that it's printed on. Maintenance are terminally understaffed, overworked. Many of them complain about not having adequate supplies to compete their, complete their jobs, including basic cleaning solutions or even trash bags. A cursory search of GDI online reveals countless stories of abuse and mismanagement reported by former and current GDI employees. I have read our contract with GDI. There are plenty of stated provisions in that contract that are supposed to guarantee that GDI cleans our buildings to an acceptable standard, and on paper, again, it looks great. But there are also provisions in that contract about the district holding that company accountable to its agreements and how it treats its employees, and I am simply not seeing that accountability happening. I would like to see that process made public. So I urge this board and Dr. Viti to resist the temptation to continue the privatization of a crucial service in our schools, even if it does save a little money in our budget. I remind you all that public schools are not corporations. Our bottom line is not profit. Our bottom line is the well-being of children. I have heard consistent praise and current, about, from the current administration about the green balance our district has in the bank. And of course, we have to be solvent, but we cannot chase an ever-increasing rainy day fund at the expense of students' learning or my or my coworkers' working conditions. Those should be our...
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Donna Rickman and James Beasley. Donna Rickman and James Beasley.
Good evening, Dr. Viti and, um, our, our school board. My name is Donna Rickman, and I am the Algebra I teacher at Henry Ford High School. I have taught math for 27 years, and I would like to use my time to discuss the high school math curriculum. I have used the curriculum, CPM, off and on for my entire career, and it has not changed very much in all of that time. It operates on the assumption that our students are at a level that is far above their current reach, and it does not correlate with the academic approach exam or the SAT that is administered at the end of a school year. Currently, our students can barely read the textbook, therefore they do not have the ability to reason, model, or discuss a problem from it when it is set before them. Our students have missed two years of mathematics instruction, in addition to the achievement gap that was already in place. So in reality, our students are reporting to ninth-grade Algebra I as fifth graders or less, unable to do basic calculations of addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, even with the use of a calculator. Our students lack the computation and communication skills that would normally precipitate modeling and reasoning and student-led discussions at a level that is commensurate, commensurate to the level of the CPM adoption. As the district, you are asking us to differentiate our lessons and use the, the current adoption with fidelity. The problem with that is you are asking us to use with fidelity materials that do not make sense to our students. You are basically asking us to continue to perpetuate their failure by pretending that they have the skills needed to successfully progress through the current curriculum successfully. You are asking us to overlook these issues and press forward with a curriculum that causes our students to shut all the way down when they are asked to engage with it. I contend that we are setting them up to continue to fail. We need to be able to make adjustments and additions to the curriculum at the classroom level that will benefit the scholars we have in the room, to truly be able to differentiate so that we are able to reach the regular ed students, our students with special needs, and every student in between. I am not asking that we throw away what we have. I am asking that we be allowed to rebuild the missing foundation and use what we know works in our classrooms with our students at our discretion and without fear of punishment from our district. We need to be able to reach back to previously used materials from previous grade levels and other sources to add to what we are using. We need to be able to supplement without fear of repercussions from the district because we went off curriculum to provide lessons in the basics. We are doing our students a disservice by not providing them with the conceptual computational skills they need to, uh, advance the modeling and reasoning that is required of the current adoption. Our students need our help, and we should be permitted to provide it in any way, using all the materials necessary to pursue, uh, to ensure better outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rickman. James Beasley and Davino Hogan. Please just correct the pronunciation of your name when you get to the mic.
All right. Good afternoon, President Mayberry, Dr. Viti, illustrious board members, and Bishop Vaughn. Congratulations on your induction to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. I stand before you today as a multi-alegiant individual. I'm a citizen of Detroit. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a graduate of Detroit Northwestern High School, and I stand today because I'm troubled. I'm troubled because of the lack of achievement from this board. I'm troubled because of your decision to give a contract to Beyond Basics. And I don't have anything against Beyond Basics, but I think that what we should be about is we should be about following the law as it is written. That Every Student Succeeds Act says that we should have programs that are evidence and research-based. Now, if we look at how education is funded here in Michigan, each student receives $9,000 per year. That's our base allocation. And based on that, base allocation, if we take a look at how much this $15 million contract is costing us per proficient student, it comes down to, if they achieve their goals on 100% of the students, it's going to cost $9,330 per student. That's $300 more than we receive from the state for a supplemental program, you know? And to say this is not a conflict of interest is beyond belief. There is no way you cannot, Dr. Viti can improve his family's income by giving a $15 million contract. That's what, that's what conflict of interest is all about. There's not even a arms-length distance between this transaction, but yet community-based organizations are denied participation. That's something I have a problem with. You know, I've come before this school board before, not only dealing with the Two Sigma Research Group, which we have tons of data. Always, when we came first, you were asked, "Where is the data?" I showed some data to you, Dr. Viti, and you told me that this was old data. You said it was old data while you shake your head. Now, Pythagorean theorem is old data. E equals mc squared is old data, you know? So to have a program in which excludes participation from people in Detroit, I take great exception. And that's why I keep coming back. Even a dog knows the difference between someone accidentally stepping on him and getting kicked. The level of disrespect I receive from this board is beyond belief. Now, I tried to say, I was trying to stay away from it, but like Michael Corleone says, every time I try to get out, you pull me back in. This foolishness does not make sense at all. I came to you with vendors that got capable and brought in over millions of dollars in cost savings, and yet you pass on it. The time is up. Where is...
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. You know, there's never an intention to be disrespectful. That's a, that's opinion. Daviny Hogan and Jerome Shell. We're going to be respectful of everybody coming to the mic, as everybody's been respectful thus far. Let's continue to do that. Ms., uh, can you pronounce your name for us, please?
Uh, Daviny Hogan.
Daviny Hogan. Okay, thank you, Ms. Daviny Hogan.
Good evening, Dr. Viti and Board of Education. My name is Daviny Hogan, and I am 22. And I am here asking that the... And I am here asking that the current decision to terminate me be reconsidered based on the following reasons. I am a proud product of the Detroit Public Schools Community District. I completed all 13 years of my education in DPS CD, and I'm a proud member of the Martin Luther King Junior Senior High School, class of 2017. I have been employed with the district for five years and have given my all in every which way that I could. Prior to getting hired by the district, I worked hundreds of hours after-school assisting administration and staff. I have current DPS CD staff members that will vouch for my unwavering support and time for all things DPS CD. If my school needed me, I was there. And when they didn't ask me, I showed up to support. I enjoyed working so much at King that I decided to seek employment with the district where I still continue to work beyond my scheduled clock hours. In 2020, the rock of our family, my dad, passed away. My dad was also an employee of the district. I had to deal with my dad dying alone in a hospital during the pandemic. Losing a loved one is already hard, but losing a loved one during the pandemic was even harder. I was very happy to return face-to-face because it allowed me to go back to what I enjoyed, and that was working with my Mason family. What I did not know was that there would be days that the loss of my father, whom I was very close to, would affect me in the way that it did. In addition to grieving my dad, I lost five additional family members and was assigned to be one of the emergency contacts for my grandfather, who suffers from dementia. I ask the Board, please, now, through all my trials and tribulations, I stand before you as the one who loves what I do, and I would very much like the opportunity to keep my job, if not at my current school, maybe somewhere else. Yes, life knocked me down, but here I stand, willing and able to serve. I trust in the Lord, and I know that there is somewhere for me to continue to work and serve somewhere within the district that I love. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hogan. Jerome Shell and Vice President Wilkins, Wilson Lumpkins. And the Vice President that will be our last in-person. And I just encourage you, for those who are making public comment, if you have questions, to stay around so you can hear the answers. People, people are dropping the mic and leaving, but we want to be able to respond. And respectfully, we've changed from doing it from, you know, if you announce at this meeting, not till the next meeting. We do it at the end of public comment, so if people could just bear with us. We're down to the last two, Mr. Shell, Ms. Wilson Lumpkins. And we have three online that were in the first meeting.
Good evening. My name is Jerome Shell, and I chair a committee called Black Lives Have Value with the National Action Network. Over the past year, some of your staff has contacted me to let me know that you were going to include some African-centered education, and I believe specifically critical race theory to your curriculum. And I applaud that you finally have done that, if that's the truth. But my concern is a larger concern. And it's simply that black students don't have the same representation as white children. And, you know, I'm just a trade instructor. I'm not an educator like you. I'm, but I am a trade instructor, and I'm a real estate investor. When I say that black students don't have the same representation as white children, it's simply put, white children, in order for you to teach them, you have to have a certain amount of accreditation of their history in order for you to get your accreditation. But black children's history is not even in the books. That simply said this. You use the criteria of the largest corporations in the world for white children. With the banking industry, they want to know your credit history. With the medical community, they want to know if anyone has a history of this disease in your family. You know what all of your corporations do. They all want to know your years of experience. So I simply just want to say that our children's history needs to be, or our history period, needs to be in all of the history books for all of the students of the world. Because one example is most of the crimes that were committed, whether it was that father-and-son team down in Georgia, or whether it was the storming of the Capitol, they all were miseducated. And simply put, we need to think about it. Use the Buffalo shooter example. Had he been educated early on of the real American story, he may have changed his mind if he knew that we created the water closet, paper towel. Had he known, he, 200 miles he traveled. Had he known that we created the traffic light, he may have changed his mind. So the only thing I want to say is no student should be able to graduate from any public school or institution without knowing our story. Tell the rest of his and her story, which will automatically include our story. Know my story. Know our story. And if you don't, you need to ask somebody. Know your history, or you're doomed to repeat it.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Vice President Wilson Lumpkins? And Noah?
Good evening, and thank you. You've heard from some of our members on this evening on a variety of issues across this district. As we end the school year, I think it is past time that we address this curriculum. As we heard Mother Moore and Dr. Telford and others say that we have a serious problem in our city with our illiteracy rate. Our teachers and students have struggled along attempting to digest this curriculum. Teachers and students, including my son standing here, stressing over end of the year and demonstrating growth. While I know that evals are required by the state of Michigan, we are in control of the amount of tests that we give our students. M-Step, I-Ready, Performance Matters, PSAT, SAT, NAP, Academic Approach, Work Keys, and there's probably more. I just don't know them all. And at the high school level, Academic Approach has not had access to its testing data all year. You send monitors into classrooms to enforce teachers use the curriculum with fidelity. In any differentiation, teachers are then bullied to replace those materials with the current curriculum. There is no consideration for the children who just maybe are using the materials that they need and actually depend on. The curriculum is neither vibrant, imaginative, teacher-friendly, kid-friendly. And I would be remiss if I did not add that it is not representative of our students. We want what's best for our children, and this curriculum is not it. The gap is widening. It is not phonics-based, and it is so much so that the district has created its own foundational phonics skills workbook and purchased Orton Gillingham as a supplement for our struggling readers. That's just the reading. I don't even want to get on Eureka Math with its narrow scope, neither aligned with I-Ready, and K-8 grades are tested on content that they will never be taught. We have done our time with these curriculums. We will not be hoodwinked into selecting a curriculum if we are not ready and we do not agree. Let's move on from teaching test anxiety with these students. We've done it before, and we can do it again. Let's create our own curriculum that is culturally responsive, phonemic-based, includes seven traits of writing that is vibrant, imaginative, whimsical, relevant, practical, teacher-friendly, and most importantly, student-friendly.
Thank you. So we started public comment at 7:06. The time is now 8:06. There are three online public commentators who were at our first meeting. So the Chair will entertain a motion to extend to hear from the three, last three public commentators.
Madam Chair, I move to extend public comment.
For the last three?
For the last three participants.
Is there support? It's been properly moved by Vice President Hunter Harvell, properly supported by Member Vaughn, to extend public comment to include the last three online commentators who were on the budget hearing. I will turn this portion over for these three to Ms. Drake.
Hi, Julia. Please go ahead with your comment.
Thank you so much for extending the public comment time to here for me. I want to start. My name is Julia, and I am the adult coordinator. Yeah. Can you not hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you, Julia.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you so much. So I'm the adult coordinator for Detroit Area Youth United Michigan, a DM, which is a youth-run activist organization. I want to start by thanking the Board President and the Board Vice President for meeting with our student members earlier this week and talking with us about their concerns about the Uniform Code and the removal of the Uniform Code. And y'all gave some really great questions and really engaged with their concerns. We had heard from the district that there will be a new code of conduct proposed soon that drastically alters the uniform policy and allows a lot more freedom to students and freedom of choice in their clothing. So we really wanted to just come today to speak in support of that change. I've been in talks all day today with students who have talked about the anxiety and stress it causes them to be pulled out of class and reprimanded for the clothes they're wearing or their body type or the way that their body looks in certain clothes. And we really feel that this change will help them to be able to focus on learning and really give them some time back in the classroom to focus on both safety and health and wellness. And you talked about mental health earlier. That's a huge aspect as well. So they asked me to come and share their thoughts about that and just really speak in support of the changes that the district is proposing and ask you to pass that uniform revision, that code of conduct revision, with full support to the hard workers in the district who wrote it. So thank you so much for your time. And we do hope that you follow through and make those changes. And please reach out to us if you have more questions or want to talk more about what those changes will look like and how they will impact student experience, because we have a lot of thoughts. Thank you so much.
Ms. White? Ms. White, please go ahead with your comment.
Kendra White, Virtual School. One, we had gunshots at the virtual school. No keys to lockdown, very panicky. Teachers are very upset still. We didn't get the keys. But we have them now. But still, no security guard. Teachers are concerned. Class size, yes. I want to go ahead. Dr. Vidi, you were right, misunderstanding. Quarter, what I calculated, and the reason why I didn't have the right information is because out of Power School, it's missing. However, I was able to go through and go into LearnZillion. It is now called Imagine Learn or something like that. But the point is, the students are still there. Assignments are still there. Quarter one and quarter two, we had 91, 91, and 91 for third grade. Two teachers. I mean, 92 and 91. Two cohort groups. However, we had to teach two subjects. So that was 92, 92, 92. So I taught ELA. All block social studies. 276 grades put in the gradebook. The other teacher, the second teacher, had 91, 91, 91. Math, you know, the centers for math, and then science. So again, 273 grades totaling 549 grades in the gradebook, quarter one and quarter two. They disappeared at the very end of quarter two, giving us 60. We got another third-grade teacher giving us 60 students for the Q group, 69 for the R group, RP. For the LS group, 68 students, 197 students, even more students. So we got another teacher, but we had more students come in. Could you imagine the paperwork and the trail on that, especially during TWIs? Okay? So there's that. And then finally, quarter four. Remember, this isn't in Power School anymore. It's gone. It's still in my curriculum platform as well, is still. Quarter four. Q group is now at 40. The RP group is at 46, and the LS is at 47. That's 133 students today. So now, if I look at the math on that, we had, if, if, we had 30 students. Okay? And we took that middle group that I talked about with our three teachers, 197 teachers, I mean, 197 students. That would require 6.5 students. Well, cost the district $525,000. Instead, we budgeted on our backs $237,000. Yes, you're correct. I was. It is a misunderstanding. We had quite a bit more, and we are burnt out and tired. And stop, I just want to say, please stop treating us like Harry Potter under the steps. Not giving us clothes and food. We don't have the materials. Our parents are stressed. Our students are stressed. And then you're not giving us three-hour early release as if our homes aren't hot? That's not fair, and that's not right. And our kids know it, our parents know it, and we know it.
Celeste, please go ahead with your comment.
Hello. My name is Celeste Turner, and I want to share my concern about the current procedure, policy procedure for safety requiring a police report being filed with the Detroit Police Department before DPS CD police will investigate a case of stalking, harassment, or bullying. I'm referring specifically to the high schools. If a student or family tells the principal, dean of culture, and contacts the DPS CD Public Safety Department, why isn't that enough for action to take place by the school district Public Safety Department? If you are a student that walks to school or lives in the neighborhood where the person might live, they are being asked, students are being asked to take on a risk without knowing that they will be protected from the person. Also, I think about the high school students who may not have family support to navigate this process. This can be very intimidating. I understand this being a requirement if the incident happened outside of school, but this is a requirement if you are reporting a problem that is happening in your school during the school day. The bullying, harassment, and stalking that takes place is very much online via Instagram and other social media. I'm not sure the school district understands the heightened fear that this creates for the student that's been targeted directly. I heard Dr. Vidi mention that there, in the future, will be a police officer in each high school. I'm wondering who will have jurisdiction, Detroit Police Department or DPS CD. I'm requesting that the school board, superintendent, and Public Safety Department reevaluate the requirements to file a police report with the Detroit Police Department before taking action on behalf of a student when it's regarding the bullying, harassment, and stalking, especially the version of cyber. The more steps you add to the process, the less chance you have for a student to feel comfortable or safe reporting a problem. Regarding security at K8 schools, there is a broader conversation happening right now around active shooter drills that are indicating it is a mistake to have all of your students in one designated area in a classroom. I'm asking that the school board take a look at this new data and new information. And finally, I'd like to ask, does every DPS CD school have a designated location in the community if students are evacuated from the building? This should be a part of the active shooter drill plan that schools have on file and that the parents are made aware of what that location is in case of any evacuation at a school. This is something we've had in the past with DPS CD or with DPS schools. And I think if it is not in place right now, it needs to be. What we saw with Uvalde, where that parents arrived and they didn't know where to go. Thank you for considering my suggestions.
Madam Chair, we have one more participant who was on before the close of public comment.
Okay.
Tracy, please go ahead with your public comment.
Hey, thank you so much. So hello, everybody. Again, I am so grateful for the opportunity to be teaching safely online. It's passed actually over two years now. So God bless you all for those wise and... So God bless you all for those wise and compassionate decisions. However, so teaching online, you know, is hard, it's difficult to keep the students in attendance, so I have some suggestions. So my first suggestion, suggestion is to allow all the virtual teachers with the desire and definitely those with medical accommodation requests to teach from home all five days and not just the three days. While you guys were firing the cold, students were without a critical science teacher for many months. I'm not even sure if it was ever replaced at all. And number two, please assist with the 2020 protocol set in place for good reason. All right, but the ability for students to play peek-a-boo during a drive-by for the class meetings, you know, instead of staying the whole hour, they get to come in for 20 minutes over three hour block. Put those students on probation, all right, and then maybe revisit it after county day. So, they can transfer back if they don't meet the standards, but I think the students should be given notice. I hear that we're just going to get rid of them because they didn't meet the protocol for attendance and grades. Not necessarily get rid of them, but offer them to go back to their schools. And I think they need one more chance because they really didn't have what they needed upfront. They needed to be warned ahead of time, I think. But number three, please do not continue transferring teachers at any school. We used to transfer basic seniority, as you know, and pupil numbers if they were too low. But now it just seems like it's just political or personal, whatever. So, this does not leave us with continuity for the students, which is bad for educating our children. So allow teachers to be masters in their field. And it takes a lot to break down a classroom, as well as those willy-milly classroom changes that some principals do. I don't understand that. And I also don't understand why we're being asked to interview for our jobs again at the virtual school. We interviewed them to get the position. I don't know why we would need another interview as opposed to the end-of-the-year eval or something, as in all schools. And the fourth one, keep the virtual classes in the book. I know you heard Kendra, she was talking about how she had some of these students. I myself taught 200 plus students in fifth grade. I had over 100 in AM and over 100 in PM. Me and my co-teacher and a few other teachers at that building had that really high number. And so, it could have been avoided. So right now, I just want you guys to keep that in mind, even though right now I have 87 students between the two classes. It's still more than notion. You guys received a lot of money for those pupils, so maybe reconsider that. And abolish the 10 days.
Okay. We're all set, Ms. Drake?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, a lot was raised and we are, we're writing down the questions and receiving the comments, let me say that. So there are a couple of things that I think needs to be addressed. One, let me just address Beyond Basic. So for some reason, there's been a lot of talk that has resurfaced around Beyond Basic. So again, I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity as it relates to the action the board took. Please don't mistake us not doing our due diligence just because you don't agree with our decision. So, when we talk about saying that things are being disrespectful, that's just an assumption that you're assuming because the action that we're taking is not what you agreed to. So please don't do that. We do our due diligence with everything that we do here. So I don't want that to be misconstrued. So people are criticizing the way that this particular contract was rewarded and what was disclosed during the process. So just for total transparency, there was a, all of the contracts go through a procurement process. And that's really just to avoid any negative or fraudulent business practices. So, just know that the entire process of completing a disclosure around conflict of interest, those type of forms that are just as required of the board as well, required of staff as well, that was done. So I don't want people to think that that wasn't done, that was done. The board was fully aware of the contract with Beyond Basic. Let me also just mention that Beyond Basic had been doing business with the district before. So let me just, you know, it's been said, so before Ms. Viti worked for Beyond Basic. And if you've been around a while, you know that. It was before this board even took office that Beyond Basic was doing contractual work with the district. And all of this was an attempt to fill the literacy gap. There are several contractors, vendors, partners, stakeholders. The gap is so large that there are several that are needed for this, not one person. So to think that everything was relied for on one vendor is disingenuous. We did see the data, we saw the data, and the data was very attractive on what could be done. We've asked for data at the end of this school year, as we do not just with this contractor, but with those that is doing this service, to decide if there is concerted effort, votes to move forward with this contractor in the future. Maybe not. We will see the data, we will analyze the data. How many grades did young people move forward with reading? And so we've had some baseline data, some mid-year data, however, we want end-of-the-year data. So, we spoke about a dashboard, and that is conversation that is becoming reality. We've been talking about that. And so we do think it's important, Ms. Moore I think left, but we do think it's important for the community to see in the most transparent and most elementary way to avoid having to go too deep, wherever our kids, where are they now, based on the services that they receive? So I know that we are more concerned, we should be more concerned about the work being done so that our students become masterful at something as, as basic as reading. As we try to prepare them for college and career and whatever their next step is, they have to know how to read. And so there's no one group that's going to be able to do that. Mothermore and the Les Re program, they're doing a great job. Yes, they are volunteers, they're doing a great job. At scale, it's going to require more than just one group. So there are several, several supplements, several reading materials, several contexts of what we're doing as we try to close this literacy gap. So I just wanted to say that we have to leverage all of our resources. Please do not think that we didn't know that Ms. Viti worked for Beyond Basic. We knew that. So to say you all need to do your homework, you haven't done it, we, we knew that, we knew that when we voted. So, so, and I want our general counsel to address the disclosure, that whole space that we have to all sign that form. Because I don't want people to think that Dr. Viti didn't share that, and it doesn't mean that things are being rubber stamped, let me say that. Because there are conversations that happen long before here and well into the night when others are sleeping. Conversations are happening, work is being done. So please don't assume that the only time we're doing work is when we sit on this board at this, at this meeting. Work is being done all the time because our young people deserve that. So I know we are all passionate about our young people. And we're going to continue to work to make sure that every resource that's available to them will be given to them. So, so continue to work because it is working, it's being done. And so maybe not as fast as, as many would like, but there are some things that are other variables like attendance that we, Dr. Viti, I want you to address a couple of things that were said during public comment, just for more clarity. But can I have our general counsel, one, talk about the policy, and then in that policy, talk about what was raised today?
The policy that applies here is Policy 1130, Conflict of Interest. It's available on Board Docs, and it talks about what happens when there's a conflict of interest, how to disclose it, and what you can or cannot do if you have disclosed a conflict of interest. So a conflict of interest occurs when an individual has a financial interest directly or indirectly or some other interest that could in some way impair one's fairness or impartiality on the job. Then it goes through and it talks about the different types of conflicts, whether it's a family member that's involved or a financial interest. The district requires in subsection A, annual disclosures. All officials shall file electronic disclosures upon hire and thereafter annually disclosing all existing potential, possible, and probable conflicts of interest. Dr. Viti does that on an annual basis, as does every employee of the district, including myself. If something happens after you file that annual disclosure, then subpart B provides that you have to provide an updated annual disclosure, that something has changed in your circumstances. Dr. Viti did that when his wife was employed by Beyond Basics. Then the policy goes on to talk about standards of conduct. And it says that no official who has a conflict of interest in subsection E, no official may participate in the selection, award, or administration of a contract supported by a federal award if he, she has a real or apparent conflict of interest. Here, we have a procurement process where there is a panel of people who review it. Dr. Viti was not a part of that panel. That recommendation from that panel then went to the finance committee. Dr. Viti does not vote on that committee. That finance committee then came to a recommendation to this board, where Dr. Viti does not vote. At all times relevant, the conflict was disclosed and he was not a part of any voting on the contract.
Thank you. The last thing I'll just say is, as a professional in your work that you do, you should be looked upon simply for that and what you do. So, to penalize a person because of who they're related to, when the work is being done and has been done, I think we're, we're all mature enough to know that it's about the students, we've heard that from several of you all. If it's really about the students, then let's really make it about the students. Dr. Viti, a couple of things I need you to address, but you can start and I will, I will come in.
So, early on, the issue of the six-period supplement came up. So we continue to make clarifications about the additional funding that was provided to teachers to take on extra classes to help students catch up in classes mainly at the high school level. So, just want to continue to thank all the high school teachers in particular that went above and beyond to teach extra classes so that students could catch up. And I am positive that we've made a lot of inroads with catching up on credits, and hopefully that can translate into better four-year graduation rates at the end of this year. But because it was new, we had to work through new payment structures, new verification processes at the school level to make sure that when the request was made, that the request was accurate and reflective of work that was actually done. And then work out any nuance because it was new. Nuance meaning how people read my email, how you read the collective bargaining agreement. So there was a lot of back and forth through individual principals, individual teachers, union representatives, payroll, those in charge of payroll at the school, and central office, including the CFO and others. So, I think we're closer than farther away from clarity, and we'll probably need to send out some kind of FAQ to specify how payment was made and why it was not, if people still have questions. And then we'll open up the process for additional dialogue after the finalization of that process is made. Punch time came up. So, to, to get right to the issue, there have been concerns over the years with ancillary staff. So these are, these are staff members, our itinerant staff members that are not assigned to one particular school. So they'll go to multiple schools to provide services. And so, there have been concerns raised, yes, by individuals that were not properly checking in at the school and fraudulently being paid or not being timed accurately for the work that they did or didn't do. And so what we decided to do is say, well, it is an individual responsibility to properly time in and time out and all that, or keep track of time, or submit time. But from a systems point of view, how do we make the system better to be more fraud-proof? And the best practice related to that is a punch time process where, when you arrive to the school to provide services, that you punch your time in electronically to ensure that you actually have arrived and when you actually leave. That cuts down on the fraud that we have seen with individual employees in various areas. So it actually came out of a, an OIG, Office of Inspector General Investigation and Concerns, that led us to improve systems and processes to prevent the fraud from reoccurring in the future. Lot of comments, lot of questions, lot of issues regarding the virtual school. So, you know, I'm proud of the fact that we are one of the few districts that offer virtual school. We wanted to offer virtual school before the pandemic occurred. About 2,000 students were in the virtual school. At the end of the day, that was probably too many. Many of the students that attended the virtual school probably didn't have either the right support at home or the right academic situation from a foundational skill or proficiency point of view to learn properly online. We also hired teachers in order to be fully staffed early on and throughout the year that maybe were not ready or the right teacher to be in the virtual school. So now that we are refining the, the way to stay in the virtual school or come in the virtual school based on grades or attendance, we will certainly have fewer students in the virtual school, which leads to the need to have fewer teachers. If the virtual school is to be really successful in a model, we need the right teachers at the school. We need the right entry process for students and the right exit process for students if they're not successful in the virtual school. So, we are requiring teachers to reapply who are at the virtual school, to stay at the virtual school because we have to get the right teachers at the school to fit the needs, the unique needs of students. I'm not going to apologize for that. That is an administrative strategy that we believe is the right one, to have the right teachers at that school. None of those teachers will be laid off, those teachers will have the opportunity and right to go to other schools with vacancies throughout the district. And even as we are, in fact, overstaffed, eventually there will be a place for those teachers to go. We are wanting to move to a virtual school model that relies less on screen time and probably more independence on independent time with some screen time, but more independent time like you see in the Michigan virtual and other virtual platforms, for example, college and graduate school, to get an assignment, you have time to submit the assignment by a certain deadline, and then it's graded rather than being on the screen time. But to do that, it requires a lot of documentation in order to ensure the FTE. And so if that documentation is going to happen, there is going to be more professional responsibility on teachers to document accordingly, and that has been an ongoing challenge since we started the virtual school. Comments were made about Old Bunch, the Old Bunch Prep School, which we originally had identified for Carson or Chrysler, but decided not to move Chrysler to the Old Bunch Prep. So right now, I think the current recommendation is to keep that building, but it's something that we can explore. So the public commenter that wanted to talk about possibly using, buying Old Bunch Prep, we'll, we'll follow up from an operations point of view to talk about the vision that the public commenter had for the school and whether the resources are there to purchase it or possibly lease it. Classroom, so even though we are in this environment of high anxiety and high awareness over mass shootings, and yes, classrooms should or could be locked if possible, that is a best practice. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't be doing walkthroughs. So, if, if we're not going into classrooms and we're not observing and not talking about and learning about best practices, what's working, what's not working, model classrooms, refinement and strategies. So, I completely agree, we should be on, on the same page about the number of visits, with the purpose of the visit, feedback after the visit, but the whole idea of only visiting the classroom once per the evaluation cycle is completely contrary to best practice in school reform and school improvement. So, refinement, understanding, collaboration, calibration on why administrators are there. All of that certainly needs more work, more conversation. But we don't want to be in a district where we're only going into a classroom for celebratory purposes or special events or just for the simple process of evaluation. The classroom should be wide open for anyone to come to observe best practices and learn to grow. ESE, center students testing only, I do understand the recommendation, but that would be a legal nightmare and possibly a violation to only test ESE center students. I completely agree, we need to improve transportation at Lyons, Legacy. I would add Westside Academy as well, are over, those are overage schools, so students that are two or more grades outside of their age cohort. We have an opportunity at Detroit Lyons at the middle school level and Westside Academy at the high school level. Those schools will be merged at the beginning of not this year, but the following year. And Legacy will also be connected to that on the former Murray Wright campus. The oppor, the opportunity there is to centralize the loc- The opportunity there is to centralize the location. So you don't have, for example, Detroit Lyons, which is on the east side, or Westside Academy on the west side, but more centrally located. That will improve transportation and access to those alternative school programs. A lot of conversation and comments, I'm trying to pick out the themes around teacher voice, around safety plans. So there is a safety plan for every school. We definitely revisited those safety plans after the Oxford shooting. We will revisit the safety plans again before the end of the year in more of a family, parent engagement session. But as we go into next year, certainly when this, before the school year starts, there's an opportunity for the principal, the properly engaged staff at the school to talk about how to improve that safety plan. And I'm more than willing to have sessions over the summer with teachers, which I will be setting up a teacher engagement session soon on improving the safety plans at individual schools outside of what I talked about today. There was a comment that was made about an app to voice or name threats or concerns that either students or staff is seeing and they're uncomfortable to report to the principal. Remember the OK to Say program that exists statewide? There's lots of pins, there's posters, but that number is 855-565-2729. There's also a text feature on it, which I don't have in front of me, but all of that can easily be found on, on social media. And we do try to promote that and we'll continue to promote that because there's no need to replicate something just for DPS CD when the moment you use that OK to Say app or text feature or phone number, it magically comes to the district where the complaint or concern was raised. Full-time custodians. So we actually explored hiring custodians first time through the district at a number of schools before the pandemic hit. Obviously, this was before inflation and staffing concerns, bottom line, before the pandemic. And it was very difficult to recruit custodians even then at individual schools. And so we had GDI, we had RNA, and we let individual schools, if I remember by memory, about a dozen principals hire their own custodians. And when we looked at the hiring process, GDI and RNA was much better than, than individual principals or the district in hiring custodians. And then there was a lot of issues around training and support. So I, I don't question that in an NDO world, it's better to hire our own people and not contract out. But, but based on where we are with staffing and the challenges we're already getting just from non-custodian hourly employees, I don't foresee a situation where our staffing levels would be better if we didn't rely on GDI and RNA. And that's just staffing. I will say from a cost perspective, and I completely agree, we are not a for-profit type of company, but we do have to balance the budget. And right now, where we're headed is the cost of everything is going up. And so the last thing we want to do is increase those costs, which will then put even more stress on our budget. So bottom line, to answer the, the concern and the suggestion, if we shifted the full-time employment of custodians, A, it would be harder to recruit and retain employees. B, it would cost, it would increase our general cost because then we would have to buy all the materials and we would have to do the training and we'd have to hire more central office staff to supervise and manage the staff in schools, which GDI, GDI and RNA does. And we've ran the budget on that and showed the Finance Committee the cost linked to that. And certainly right now, we're not in a situation to add costs in a post-COVID funding situation. There was some talk about a particular vendor, and I'll just talk more generally about vendors. If you are an eager vendor to work with the district or individual schools, we have a procurement process to follow. And whether it's math, it's literacy, it's STEM, it's robotics, it's mentoring. We do an RFP every year, even for smaller companies. And we have a set of principals that review all the, the proposals. And those principals, along with central office, sit down and review those proposals. From those proposals, individuals are, or individual companies are then selected for individual schools to partner with. That's beyond the larger contracts that the district follows. So if you're a vendor in the audience, you're a vendor listening and you have math, reading, STEM, mentoring services that you feel are superior to something that we're using, apply, go through the process, and principals will review your proposal and you can then work with an individual school or a group of schools that are interested in your product. Dr. Vidi, the superintendent, does not pick vendors for individual schools. I don't. I look at large district contracts for scale, not individual small vendors. I don't have the time, the resources, nor should I be picking small scaled vendors for individual schools. Principals are empowered to do that, not the superintendent. Any large contracts, basically above 250,000, we have our own separate process for, which I do not sit on that process. We have central office administrators mainly and some school-based administrators that review those contracts based on the level of work. They review those contract bids. Then it comes to me for a recommendation based on a scoring and a rubric. And then I determine whether I agree with that and then I take it to the board for a vote. That's how that process worked and I know our attorney reviewed that. As superintendent, I always know I'm going to be criticized for any decision I make. And I take this job and I keep this job knowing that. But do not question my integrity. If you're going to question my integrity, come with facts. If you don't come with facts, then you'll get a call from an attorney. You want to question my decision-making? You want to, want to question this personnel change? You want to question this curriculum? I'm all for that criticism. Don't question my integrity. It's the only thing I have. So I'm going to reiterate that every time someone comes to the mic. Question my decision-making. Question the direction the district is going. Push me for better results. If you're going to question my integrity, come with facts. Not hypotheticals, not the politics of who got what, when and how much, not what you've heard on the street, but come with facts or you will hear from my attorney. Curriculum. A lot of questions about curriculum. Curriculum. So when it comes to our curriculum, we were not, we were not...
Mother Moore, let's be respectful, please. You had the mic and we let you talk the entire time you had the, the opportunity. So let's just be respectful and we're going to respect you. Thank you so much. Dr. Vidi, go ahead and continue. These are all of our children, Mother Moore, but the way that you're responding is extremely disrespectful right now because we've allowed everybody to have their opportunity to speak and you always get an opportunity to speak. Dr. Vidi, if you can go ahead, please, and just talk over the disrespect. Go ahead, Dr. Vidi.
Okay. So regarding, a lot of questions and issues regarding curriculum. So I just want to take us back to where we were and where we are regarding curriculum. Five years ago, when I started as superintendent and mainly the board started, we were using curriculum that was anywhere from two to three grade levels below where children should be. So there was a lot of, a lot of comments tonight about let us use the materials that we think are best. I have no doubt that our curriculum is more challenging for our students and for our teachers to teach because it requires you to teach at grade level. And we all know that many of our students are not at grade level. So that challenge is even greater because there's a gap between where children are and the materials that we are asking students to learn and our teachers to teach at. So there is no question that there needs to be more work around foundational skills and reteaching curriculum that students are not getting the first time. We need to have many more conversations, maybe more at my level, individual school level between central office and school leaders around what is the right pacing? How do we reteach material? How do we go back and reteach skills? Foundational skills that should have been required in earlier grade levels? What, what about time? How do we use the current schedule and the time allocated to teach at grade level and revisit the skills? All open to those conversations. But what we cannot do is go back to where we were, where we teach material, with materials that are below grade level. Yes, it's easier for students. Yes, it's even easier for teachers at time. But we put our students at an immediate disadvantage when we teach below the standard that the grade level asks us to teach at. And so we also heard tonight a lot about, you know, where is the data, where are the results? Whether it's the curriculum or programs. The last time our students actually tested to see where they were at was 1819. That was three years ago, two years ago. Because in 1920, we did not test at the state level. We stopped test, we stopped iReady testing at the end of 1920. 2021, we did iReady testing and it was very hard to say that it was of quality because most of the testing was done at home. And 2122, now we'll get results at the end of this year after almost two years of, of disruption with consistent in-person learning. The first year we implemented, implemented the new curriculum that was questioned today, the first year with only one year of implementation, we saw the highest gains in fourth grade math across the nation in NAEP, National Assessment for Educational Progress. Only one year. Our students were only exposed to the Eureka curriculum for one year and showed the highest improvement in the country in all large urban school districts in fourth grade. That should show us that if we put grade level content in front of our students, they'll actually respond. Now, now all of them, different challenge. Modifying, absolutely. But it is not time to question the curriculum. It's time to question more professional development and more modification in how we implement the curriculum. But abandoning the curriculum will only put us back and put our students back. Also, a lot of conversation about phonics and foundational skills. So yes, we do, we are incorporating more phonics. The core curriculum cannot be a phonics-only curriculum in literacy because you don't teach the grade level standards only through phonics. So the early grades curriculum focuses on grade level standards and we are supplementing it with phonics. But you do not want a early grade level phonics program as a standalone. Then students don't learn how to interpret the text, talk about the text and even write if it's phonics only. And that's why we're incorporating Orton-Gillingham, which leads to the final comments about just data and performance. So Beyond Basics is an Orton-Gillingham-based intervention process. If a student is two or more grade levels below, they need explicit multisensory reading intervention. And that's through Orton-Gillingham. Orton-Gillingham is extremely expensive because you have to train the individual at a high level to work with the students in small groups or one-on-one. Beyond Basics has been doing this for well over 20 years, even in DPS, former DPS and DPS CD. The contract with Beyond Basics was expanded because we had COVID relief money to work and focus on literacy. It was the only outside provider that had the expertise and the ability to scale at the rate that we wanted to scale to get to as many children as possible that were two or more grade levels below. Our teachers cannot reach all those children individually. And our, our academic interventionists are also stretched to reach every student in small groups or individually. Yes, iReady helps with that. Yes, Let's Read helps with that and other programs do that. But to really get a student to move in literacy, you need explicit Orton-Gillingham-based intervention. Not, they can't just be read to, they can't just read. They have to go back and relearn the, the foundational skills that they lack in a different explicit way. So Beyond Basics has worked with about 900 students in the last three semesters. For the last three semesters, on average, an individual student has grown nearly two grade levels. Those are the results. Almost two grade levels, nearly 900 students in three semesters, not counting this one. So those are the results. And I look forward to expanding those results as we go forward. It will be hard to do that with COVID relief money, without COVID relief money. So are there any other areas that I missed?
Yep, a couple. What about schools with summer school happening? Will there be enough time to have schools cleaned in preparation for the August 22nd start for teachers?
Yeah, so we, we're well aware that we are, we have one less week to prepare. So we have only identified schools with air conditioning for summer school. GDI and RNA will obviously focus on those that do not have summer school first and shift their attention to those that do have summer school. But we will be deeply cleaned and ready to go the first day of school. Our team is well aware that that is the expectation before the school year starts.
Okay, thank you. Homeless students being dropped off of roll.
So there's nothing, you know, explicitly done or systematically done regarding homeless students being dropped. So I, I don't know the details there. So the best thing to do there is email me directly about any student name where that is the perception or the reality and we'll individually look at it.
Okay, so Mr. Muhammad, because that's who made that comment at Lyons Academy, so please email us around a particular student that might have been dropped. Reporting of DPS versus DPS CD, PD, Police Department issues, the reporting process.
So sometimes you hear the question and better understand it than I do. So can you, I heard the comment. I just wasn't clear with what the issue was.
So the issue was, once you report with the police department based on an experience, why then do you still have to go through all of the rigmarole with our police department? Or what is the actual process for reporting? And the jurisdiction?
So if, if a crime happens in a school, then it should go through DPS CD police. However, there are, there are times when an employee or a parent, or sometimes even a student, reports it to DPS CD police and DPS CD police do, do not feel that it is something that should be reviewed as a crime. And so that, when that happens, often a family member or an employee will go to DPD to then file it that way. And then DPD either individually will file it or come back to DPS CD police and talk about the facts or details regarding the issue. But DPS CD should be, DPS CD police should be the one addressing it if it happens on school grounds.
Okay, last two. One around summer school. It was mentioned that, as I mentioned, trying to encourage parents to sign their young people up for summer school so that we have enough staff. What's the thought process as to why we don't have more than enough staff? And then if we don't need the staff, then we don't need it. But parents are going to have an influx of registration day of?
For summer school?
Yes.
Yeah, so we have about 4,000 students signed up for summer school right now. Last year, we had 11,000 signed up and about 5,000 ended up showing up. So we are well-staffed. We don't have shortages right now for summer school. A lot of student interest. I mean, a lot of staff interest. We will staff above what the actual enrollment is. Last year, the issue was really more with one or two vendors that could not meet the scale that they thought they were going to meet for summer school. And then support staff, like academic interventionists and paras and aides had to step in and supervise students. So that contractor was not invited back. But we should be fine with staffing. The only reason we wouldn't is if staff that originally signed up do not show up or we have a large influx of students coming in. My sense is that we're not going to have a large number of summer school students because students are just generally ready for the summer.
I'm tired too. Last one, Oversight Commission. And I know Ms. Aleah Moore is the chair of that. So Janice, can you just talk about the creation, the purpose of it so that everybody understands? I know it was mentioned that they have not met since last, end of last year, I think? Since June. So can you just talk about the purpose of the creation and what the focus for that commission is as the last statement?
Policy 0156 is titled Police Department Oversight Committee. And that committee was started because it is required by the State of Michigan Public Body Law Enforcement Agency Act of 2004, which requires that any police agency under the which requires that any police agency under the state have an oversight committee. And the Oversight Committee has one task, one purpose per that statute. And it is, the Oversight Committee will receive and address public complaints concerning the Detroit Police Schools Community District Public Safety Department or any of its personnel, including but not limited to officers. The Oversight Committee may recommend to the board that an investigation be conducted regarding complaints against DPS-CD Public Safety Department. And so the only purpose of that committee is to review complaints that are made against the police department. And that, again, their purview and their purpose is set by statute. That committee would not have jurisdiction under that statute to look at public safety concerns, the type that we heard today. Per statute, their only jurisdiction is to hear complaints against police officers.
Thank you. So they will be meeting as a complaint just came in. So when the complaints come in, they will meet. And that group, as long as everybody is still interested, if not, and we need to repopulate that committee because they were very clear on their purpose when they came to that committee, then we will do that. So that's all I have, Dr. Viti, for the questions, for, for public comment, questions and answers. So I think we can move on to item number fourteen.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Member Bishop?
Yes, Madam Chair. Dr. Viti, would you address the ebook concern? That, that is a continuing conversation. Are we not going to have hard copy books in the district? Or is there going to be an option of hard copy books and ebooks?
So going into this year, no, no changes will be made about books going into next school year. All of our students will have the opportunity to pick up their own laptops at the beginning of the school day and they'll drop it off at the end of the school day. And then our younger students will have more of an iPad to use during the school day. They'll pick it up and then use it throughout the day and then drop it off so it can be charged for the next day. But no, no changes will be made regarding hard copy materials going into this school year. But as students continue, whether it was because of the pandemic or even as we move forward, we are shifting to more of electronic-based learning platform, like every other, most districts throughout the country have. Students are more comfortable using the technology than we are, or our generations are. I think hard copied material will always be available for students. But today's students learn through technology, not through the hard copy materials. Individual family or student wants a hard copy material, we can provide that. But I think we have to move forward as a district and modernize our access to curriculum to fit where the rest of the world is, and that's through technology. Now, for individual students, based on an individual education plan or their preference, as a public school system, we'll continue to provide them with hard copy materials. But most students, I believe, are ready to simply have their laptop or iPad and access all their novels, textbooks through the computer, because that's where today's learning is, while still providing access to hard copies.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say that both will basically be available. However, the majority of the population of our children, you're going, we're moving them to electronic reading. So for the parents that are not as comfortable, that have to support the child at home, they have to support the homework, have to support whatever, or if there's not the preference of that family, I'm also hearing you say that hard copy books will still be available.
Correct.
Okay. The other question, Madam Chair, that I had, that I would like to hear. The culture of administrative harassment has come before us several times. Where principals are harassing teachers and even using profanity against children. Has that been looked into since the last public comment?
Every issue that has a concrete allegation will and has been investigated.
And how, how, how would we of the board get a response to that? Because that continues to come up. And so when you say if it's a allegation that is proven, but if it's not something that is proven, does that mean it does not get looked into?
No, I, I also think that there was a lot of conversation today about, I, I think we have to continue to have a conversation about what is harassment? You know, an administrator coming into your building, coming into your classroom consistently is not harassment. A principal has a right and should be visiting classrooms weekly to understand what's happening in the classroom. That's not harassment. We heard a little bit of that today. That's not harassment. Having conversations about what materials you're using when we've invested millions of dollars in our curriculum with professional development is not harassment. That could be viewed as harassment because you feel you're being harassed, but that's not harassment. That's an administrator doing his or her job. Name-calling, threatening, that's harassment. And those examples should be investigated by the principal administrator and the central office is necessary. But I do think work still has to be done with what are we defining as administrative harassment?
And so if, when, when we continue to hear it, if it's not maybe the legal term of harassment, but if it is perceived as harassment. If it, it may not, it may not be harassment based on the textbook definition. But if it is perceived by those teachers that that is harassment, how do we move forward beyond the technicality of the word itself? Because it eventually will impact culture and climate. How do we, how do we sit with teachers and administrators, continue to hear this as a board? And, and say, okay, well, it's not harassment. But if they're saying that it's perceived as harassment, how do we, how do we fix the culture? Because that's a culture issue.
So any, any district that you go to, anywhere in this country, there is ongoing challenges with the role of the principal as the instructional leader and the classroom as being the unit of instruction. The previous practice was you hire a teacher, you give them the keys, they go in the classroom and teach. And the principal deals with discipline and so, and just runs the building. And research has shown that if you are going to consistently improve instruction, you have to observe instruction, you have to talk about instruction, you have to provide support for instruction. Because you, you just don't hire a teacher and then everything fixes itself. It's an ongoing commitment to practice. And so to your question, it is about defining expectations in the role that the principal has and how he or she will conduct themselves when talking about instruction and what happens in the classroom. You're only going to improve the climate and culture and understanding by talking about it at individual schools. And continuing to define what is harassment, what is best practice. Unfortunately, before the pandemic, I think we are moving in that direction. We haven't been moving in that direction for, for almost two years now. We have just been dealing with the pandemic. We, we haven't been talking about teaching and learning. We haven't been talking much about student achievement. And now that administrators are starting to get back in the classroom. If I, if we went, if we went back and, and, and thought about the conversations that we were having in nineteen twenty, right before the pandemic hit, these issues were coming up. We were talking more about it because the principals were getting more in classrooms. We were having data conversations about performance. We were having conversations about grouping of students. And that was all changing practice. We were changing the curriculum at the high school level. And there were teachers that were coming to say that this new math curriculum is very hard and is it right for our students? And we stopped because we were dealing with the reality of the pandemic. And interestingly enough, tonight, the last board meeting before the end of the school year, we heard a lot of these same issues that we heard in nineteen twenty. Because these issues don't go away when you're starting to implement reform. And so, and now that we're going back to the reform, I think there's going to have to be more conversations between central office, principals, principals and teachers, central office and teachers about the curriculum, about the intervention process to support for struggling students and how we're going to all hold ourselves accountable to student achievement. And that's really what you're asking, I think. And there is, the only way you get to an improved climate and culture is defining what we are trying to accomplish, which is student achievement and how we do that. And, and some teachers have a different opinion about that than principals or superintendent. And a lot of the conversation in our district has been, close the door and let me just teach. I'm willing to do that if your results show that I could close the door and let you teach. And that's always been my philosophy and that should be principal's philosophy. That there should be less work that happens in a classroom when the student achievement is outstanding. And I see pockets of that, but I don't see a system like that yet. And until we have a system like that, we have to talk more about the balance between autonomy and more oversight and more structure. So basically, more conversations back to the right balance between accountability and support. And we haven't had those conversations.
Have we done workshops or is there something in the future that engages emotional intelligence? Because of perceptions and feelings, I think, are very sensitive as a result of this pandemic. There, I think people are on edge. I think that there is a tone that could be perceived as harassing. And, and I just wonder, are we ever going to get back or not go back but to a new normal of emotional intelligence in, in and student achievement? That we don't have to sacrifice one for the other? And I know we can take this up.
They're intertwined and I, I think that's where the professional development has to go. But it has to be intertwined. It can't just be about social-emotional learning. Because the practice of teaching and the practice of intervention has to improve across the district. And, and we were doing that and we have to get back to that. But I agree, it can't just be about practice. It also has to be about the social-emotional piece as well.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else before we move to item fourteen point zero-one? So fourteen point zero-one is second reads. So these came before the board last month. All changes were considered and applied. Sure you've had an opportunity to look at each policy. Seventy-four fifty, property inventory, actually, that's a typo. I think the name was changed to equipment inventory in the actual body of, the body of the policy. It says equipment. I know we talked about it, about that in depth in the policy meeting. Seventy-four fifty-five, accounting systems for fixed assets. Seventy-five thirty-point-oh-two, staff use of personal communication devices. Seventy-five forty-two, access to district technology resources and/or information resources from personal communication devices. Seventy-five forty-three, utilization of the district's website and remote access to the district's network. Eighty-four hundred, school safety information. Eighty-five hundred, food services. Eighty-six forty, transportation for field and other district-sponsored trips. Is there any further discussion around the policies mentioned? I'm sorry, and new policy, TBN thirty-seven, equitable services, private non-public program, PNP. Any further discussion? If not, is there a desire to tie, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Member Lemmons?
Madam Chair.
Come to the mic, Member Lemmons.
Oh, Madam Chair, here it says new policy. Is that a new policy? So would it be considered with the second reads?
Which one are you asking? The new policy, TBN thirty-seven, is it new to this or, no, just new that we have? It's a new policy that we didn't have in place before?
So my question is, would that be a first read?
Didn't it come to this committee before? Yeah, it, it can't, it's a second, it's still a second read. We're doing second read. That was brought to us last month.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions? If not, is there a desire to tie bar items seventy-four fifty through TBN thirty-seven for approval? Is there support?
Support.
It's been properly moved by Member Lemmons, properly supported by Vice President Hunter Harville to tie bar seventy-five forty through TBN thirty-seven. Any discussion? All those in favor of tie burns signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion carry, the chair will now entertain a motion for the tie bar of seventy-four fifty through TBN thirty-seven.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been properly moved by Vice President Hunter Harville, properly supported by Member Lemmons for the tie bar. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Motion carry. Item fourteen point oh-two is a first read. So we have twenty-one twelve. So we're not voting on this tonight, but it is before you. If you have any immediate ads or questions for further clarity, now would be the time to bring that forward. You could also contact any member of the policy committee. So twenty-one twelve, parent involvement in K-12 school programs. Twenty-two sixty-one point oh-one, parent participation in Title I programs. Twenty-four twelve, homebound instruction programs. Thirty-two sixteen, staff dress and grooming. Forty-two fifteen, use of tobacco by support staff. Fifty-one eleven, eligibility of resident and non-resident students. Seventy-three hundred, disposition of real property. Eighty-six hundred, transportation. Are there any comments regarding any policies for first read?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. So please take the opportunity to go through those. The next policy meeting is, let us know when the next policy meeting is. We've changed meetings so much due to schedules for graduations and things of that nature. Okay, so we are now at fourteen point zero-three. Resolution of recognition of National Pride Month and support of LGBTQ plus community. And so I know several board members have had conversation around, as we talk about inclusion, diversity, equity, what does that look like to be able to bring your entire self to this space of learning? And this, this resolution speaks to us recognizing that June twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two is Pride Month in DPS-CD and encouraging all students and staff to join the celebrations, observation for this. Is there any discussion, further discussion around the resolution?
Madam Chair, absolutely. So I'm trying to understand what exactly, when you say that the celebration of this observance. So I know that Pride Month is around the world right now. So what does this mean for our district? Are we having particular celebrations? Are we having, what, what does this mean? Help me to understand what this means. I get the, I understand, you know, all of it basically, but be it resolved that June twenty-twenty-two is Pride Month in Detroit Public Schools? And that we encourage our students and staff to join a celebration? Are we having celebrations within the schools around Pride Month?
Through the chair, we do have an event. I don't recall the, the date off the top of my head, but we do have a, a, I would call it a conference where we are bringing students together with speakers of a day of celebration. I know that's what we're doing district-wide. I don't know, as I often say, a lot of individual schools do, do things on their own. But we do have a, a conference for students this month, but I don't recall the actual date.
And so is the resolution a requirement for those events?
No, I, I mean, the, the chair already broke it down. It's not about authorizing the event, it's just recognition of it being. It's, it's not about authorizing the event, it's just recognition of it being National Pride Month and the board recognizing the unique identity of all students. That's essentially it. No different than we recognize other students and their unique differences.
Do we have resolutions for those differences?
Yeah, we have.
I believe it's March. We adopt the Arab American History Month. We've done that for the past couple of years. So this is kind of in that same ilk and vein where you're just acknowledging it, not necessarily green-lighting events and things like that.
Any further questions? Member Vaughn?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Vice President Hunter Harville.
Yeah, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to make a comment through the chair. At one of the graduations that I was present at today, the principal acknowledged that this was National Pride Month and was almost like a standing ovation. So it, it, it just connects with us doing it tonight and with some of the schools are starting to really celebrate it more to make kids feel comfortable. We're just starting to do it. So it could be a lot of different activities, which I'm sure you probably know, but I just wanted to make reference to that because it had happened earlier today. And it was, it was a fitting kind of a moment at graduation.
Thank you.
Anymore questions or comments? If not, the chair entertained a motion to approve the resolution 14.03.
I'm going to approve resolution 14.03 in recognition of National Pride Month in support of LGBTQ community.
Is there support?
Support.
It's been properly moved by Vice President Hunter Harville, properly supported by Member Vaughn, was that you?
No.
Oh, Member Lemmons. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Moore, can you do a roll call for the vote, please?
Bishop Coletta Vaughn?
No.
Georgia Lemmons?
Yes.
Dr. Deborah Hunter Harville?
Yes.
Angelique Peterson Mayberry?
Yes.
So I know people have questioned before when the full board was not present. And so the vote today looks like that the vote would pass because three of us said yes and one said no. However, the majority has to be from the full board of seven people. So we would need four yeses to pass, so the, so the motion fails. We now go to item 15.01, announcements. Do we have any announcements? Any announcements? The one announcement I would like to make is on Friday, February, no. On Friday, June 17th, at Fellowship Chapel, through the efforts of AFT and DFT collaborated and President Randy Weingarten, there are 10,000 books that are going to be given out on this Friday. So you do not have to be an educator, you could be a community member. There are books being given to students. Students, I think, get, Ms., Ms., Vice President? Can you, how many books? Can you just talk about that really quick? Okay. So as many as you can carry. So 10,000 books is what we have. Please tell Mother Moore, tell your leserie group, everybody, Mr. Beasley, tell your groups. Because the one thing we don't want is we talk about this issue and we have people giving stuff away and we don't accept it and we don't take advantage of it. There are little libraries outside of schools and churches. You could take them and put those in those little libraries. But the commitment was for 40,000 books total? And 10,000 will be given away on Friday, Fellowship Chapel. From what time, Ms. Lumpkin? 1:00 to 8:00 p.m., so we're covering all shifts. So thank you. Fellowship Chapel, 7707 West Otter Drive. Any other announcements before we adjourn? Not the chair entertained a motion to adjourn, the time is 9:23. Thank you for being here with us for this entire moment. Some of you have been with us since 5 o'clock. The chair entertained a motion.
So moved.
Is there support? Okay, any, any opposition for the adjournment? All in favor? Any opposed? No, thank you so much, be safe, everybody.
Have a good night.
Madam Chair, we need to talk about these graduations on the same night as board.
I don't know.
You have a ritual like tonight.
Listen, no, you, listen here, somebody.